All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, and we have the triple threat this evening. We have a work session with three items. We have a special called session, and then we have our normally scheduled agenda-setting session. And when we get into the special called session and the agenda-setting session, I'll describe public input opportunity for those meetings. Do want to begin, as we always do, with our civility pledge. Appreciate being a community of civility, along with so many of our peers across the state. And so the way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when differing views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at times, at all times, with civility and courtesy to each other. So the first opportunity to practice, that is going to be the first of three work session presentations. We're going to hear from Splos staff, John Semino, who's going to talk to us about the East Side Library. Then we're going to hear about locations for the facilities modernization or courthouse. And then we're going to talk about the Classic Center Arena's third bond financing opportunities. John, good to see you today.
Yeah, great to see you as well. For those who don't know me, I'm John Semino. I'm one of the Splos project administrators, and I'll be giving the presentation for the East Side Public Library candidate sites. So first off, just for agenda and purpose, the purpose will be to present the potential sites information and then go through the site selection committee's recommended candidate sites for the project, which will then be coming in August for approval. There's a quick agenda for you. We'll start off with the history. Just a few bullet points here. First off, on November 1st, the mayor and commission approved the site selection criteria, which is what informed narrowing down the list of potential sites. So we used those criteria to narrow down potential sites. Then in March, the site selection committee approved those potential sites, eight of them. After they got approval from the site selection committee to go to public input, we then went to that public input in April, May timeframe. You'll see there's some information about the responses. We'll get into that later in the presentation. And then in July, taking that information from public input from the potential sites narrowed it down to four candidate sites for the project. This is just a brief overview of the budget here. You'll remember it's $14 million worth of Splos funding, $2 million of state grant funding, for a total of $16 million. And you'll see how that breaks down in the line items below, leaving a total of $7.5 million for construction. This, again, just gives you an overview of kind of the timeline to this date. So we met with user group and site selection committee to develop the criteria, got public input on that, got that approved by the mayor and commission, then used those criteria, which we'll go through in a minute, to develop the potential sites list, got public input on that list, then narrowed it down to a candidate site list of four sites, which we'll go through as well. And then we'll talk about next steps down at the, on the last slide. So first off, just a refresher on the site selection criteria. I know this was approved back in November, but just wanted to give a brief overview. So this is the map that really guided the area that we were looking at for the East Side Public Library. So the gray highlighted area shows the must-have boundary. So anything within that boundary, we were looking at as a potential site for the East Side Public Library. Anything outside of it, we were not looking at. The blue shaded area highlights the highly-wanted area. So anything within that area was something that was targeted as a more desired area to have the East Side Library. And then those yellow circles are the nice-to-have area. And those are really centered around the main corridors at the East Side, as the site selection committee saw it. And those are where the best locations for the East Side Public Library, looking on a map. So I won't go through all of these, but these criteria kind of defined the criteria that we were looking at as we went through the list of 13,000 sites that fit within that must-have boundary and then started pairing that down based on these criteria. So I won't go through all of these. They're split into community values, which are more of the soft skills, kind of how it fits within the fabric of the community. And then there's technical values, which are the design criteria that the site must meet. One that I will point out is the proximity to schools. This was one of the more limiting criteria as we started to dive into the analysis. You'll see the must-have criteria is within a five- to 10-minute walk of a school campus. That ended up, a lot of sites didn't meet that criteria because it was pretty stringent. So that's one that I just wanted to note. But you can read through those as well. I just put them in there for your reference. Technical values, the one that I'll hit on is the minimum site acreage is three and a half acres. So we really limited the parcels that we're looking at to those over three and a half acres, which took out a lot of the more residential parcels in, on the East Side. But we looked at all these other factors as well, topography, utility access, as we went through that analysis. So this is the site selection committee-approved list of potential sites. There were eight of them. These are the eight sites that, as we went through all of the criteria, met all of the must-have criterias and were the highest-scoring sites, or met them at the time that we were evaluating this list. You'll see the max potential score was 80 points. The top-scoring sites got 56, and then it kind of goes down from there. So these are the sites that the site selection committee approved to go to public input as the best potential sites for the new East Side Library. Next up, I'll summarize public engagement. So we did online public input and then in-person public input. It was open from April to May, mid-April, or late April to late May. Was posted in a bunch of different places, the website, the Splos project page, was sent out to contacts throughout the county. So we got pretty good responses on that, 233 respondents, so we were pleased with that amount. Got some really good input from that online survey. We also had in-person sessions, so there were three in-person sessions, one at the library, two on the East Side, to get in-person feedback on the potential sites for the project. And we had about 60 people across those three sessions, which, again, we got some really good feedback during those meetings. This gives just an overall summary of the online input. In the history slide above, I put the link where you can go and see the full results. But this just gives you a sense, and thanks to the GIO and Joseph's team for putting this together. But they went through all of the responses, and for any responses that were positive, they gave it a pro-location. Any that were negative or kind of had a negative thing to say about the property, gave it a con-location. So you'll see each of the potential sites down the left side. The blue graph represents the positive remarks towards the property. The orange is the negative remarks. So you can see a general trend of how those sites were favored on the online input, just generally here. And I'll go through the candidate sites right now. I'll talk a little bit about the public input that we got on those. The others I won't touch on, but feel free to ask questions. I've also put the other benefits and challenges for the sites that weren't recommended at the end of the slideshow, if you want to reference any of those. But we'll jump into the candidate sites for the project. So there were four recommended candidate sites for the project, which I'll go through now. They all actually had the same score after we scored them all, at 56 points. So they're all very high-scoring, the most high-scoring parcels that we looked at. And so this next step of the process, that'll really restart, and we'll dive into more of the due diligence of these parcels, assuming that they get approved. So the first of those is 1030 Barnett Shoals Road, which is an undeveloped property on the East Side off of Barnett Shoals that's owned by Athens Clark County. I won't read through all these benefits and challenges, but some of the main ones are that it's within that highly-wanted, blue-shaded area, which we looked at earlier. It's owned by Athens Clark County, which is a big plus because we won't spend money on land acquisition. It has access to bus routes. One of the big pros that we talked about with site selection committee is the access to the greenway. There's a greenway connection in close proximity to the site, so would really have some good multimodal access to this site. Some of the challenges are, one of the big ones that came up as we went through the process is we considered Joy Village Middle School as one of the proximity-to-school requirements. And then later got the news that that school was closing at the end of the year. So we felt that, or the site selection committee felt that, that even though it didn't meet that proximity-to-school requirement anymore, it met it at the time we analyzed it, and the benefits of this site really outweighed the challenges. And then some of the other challenges were traffic. So this was one that we really heard a lot from the public, is that people go fast on Barnett Shoals Road, and there's not a signalized intersection at this site. And so that it was a concern that the public had. Another concern the public had was just taking existing green space and developing it. So those were a couple of things that the public noted. But overall, site selection committee felt that the benefits of this parcel outweighed those challenges, and we'll dig into those challenges more in the next phase. Second site is 280 Gaines School Road, which is the current location of the Clark County School District Early Learning Center. Some of the benefits here are that it fell within the nice-to-have area, which are those really-desired areas on the East Side that were targeted for the public library. It is kind of in that main corridor of East Side, so surrounded by residences, businesses, walkable to schools, on bus routes. So it really is a great location for the library, kind of in a central part of the East Side. And that was a lot of the feedback we got from the public, is that they were, they were positive about this site. Thought it would be a great location for the new library. Some of the challenges, one is that it's owned by the Clark County School District. So we have had some initial conversations with them about developing this site in partnership with them. So we'll dive into those more kind of in the next phase as we, as we look at the planning on this site. It's just on the edge. Actually, the corner of this site is within the airport landing zone, so there might be some special sound construction that we need to do because of that, just because it is a library. It needs to be quiet inside. And then one of the main concerns from the public was traffic. Again, taking left turns in and out of the site, off of Gaines School Road, was a concern. Next up, we have 2,000 Barnett Shoals Road and 2301 College Station Road, which is the current location of the Kroger and old Kmart on the East Side. So if you flip back to those potential sites, you'll see that it was only listed as 2,000 Barnett Shoals. Originally, we were just looking at the old Kmart on this site. Then as we went through the process, the plans for Kroger redevelopment kind of came through. So as we talked to the committee and got feedback from the public, we decided to expand it. All of these sites are owned by Kroger, and I know they have plans to redevelop all of them. We have had some initial conversations with them about partnering with them in that, so they'll use that old Kmart site for their Kroger. And we've had conversations with them about either using those existing buildings or somehow using the buildings that they've planned for that parcel. But this was one that was highly-favored by the public. This got the most positive input from the public by far. And is, again, similar to the Gaines School site, is in that main corridor. Lots of businesses, lots of residences close by, and really, would really be a great location for the library. The main challenge is obviously the ownership and then the lack of green space. Because it's an existing developed site, there's a lack of opportunity for, for green space on the site. And finally, we had 4440 Lexington Road, which is the location of Southeast Clark Park. This one, again, if you go back to the potential sites, was not on that list of potential sites that went out to the public. And that's because it doesn't meet the walkability to school requirement. And so that was something that took it off of that potential sites list. But as we went back and got the public input, a lot of people from the public were asking why it wasn't considered as one of the sites and said it would be a great site for the library. And in further conversations with the site selection committee, they, they felt the same way, that the benefits of this site really outweigh that negative of not being walkable to a school, given the fact that it's owned by Athens Clark County. It's in that nice-to-have area. It's a place where people are already coming, so they'll be coming to a sports game. They can stop at the library. And it's really just a central part of the East Side of Athens. And so really felt that the pros outweighed that con of it not being close and walkable to a school. So those are the candidate, the four candidate sites for the project. I'll quickly hit on next steps. So we'll be going for a vote on August 1st for those candidates, those four candidate sites. Assuming that we get approval on August 4th, we will then jump into more detailed analysis of those four sites. So that includes doing site layouts, laying out the building and parking, stormwater, all the utilities on the site, making sure that it all works from a design perspective. And then we'll also be doing some environmental assessment, so looking at, doing a phase one, looking if there's any environmental problems potentially or cost drivers that we need to take into consideration. Doing a traffic study, a lot of the public input was centered around, you know, tough left end, left turns into the site, traffic concerns. So we'll start to look at that and see what we can do to alleviate those traffic concerns. And then do an overall budget to say what would it take to develop this site and have kind of a different price point for each of these sites. The goal is to have that all done by November and come to you guys with a recommended site in November. That'll be under executive session. But that is all I had. I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Everybody got their card updated, I hope?
Card?
Yeah.
Carol?
The card updated? Okay.
Our card.
I just want to follow up and make a comment, having, serving as the chair of the site selection committee on this and just address the addition of the Southeast Clark Park, like sort of follow-up to what we've heard from John already. And I probably will say things more bluntly here, just in that the three sites, the Gaines School, the early learning site, the Kroger site, and the site on Barnett Shoals, they all have various issues with them in terms of practicality, like will someone sell us? Will, does Clark County have some other ideas for that? The Clark County School District have some other ideas for that piece of property? Will Krogers, like they'll do a long-term lease, and if anyone that's out there is wondering, can the, what is it, the grant money from the library work for a leased spot? We did get feedback on that, that yes, on a long-term lease it would work, but what's that long-term lease going to, you know, cost us? So the other property that was on that original three that we had from the user group as well is the one on Barnett Shoals. That's a little bit further from schools. It was, it was far from the Joy School, even when that did exist in terms of walking. It's, I mean, no one else has brought this up, so maybe it's not accurate. But the topography, I think, is challenging there. It drops down to the river, and we have the Georgia Power things. Also, if you looked at that public comment, that actually got the least positive reaction from the public, from that spot. So we thought it, you know, we talked about like, oh, should we open this all up again? But looking through the history on this, we started this process almost a year ago in terms of the site selection and the criteria. So going through that process would put us way behind on that. So with the, you know, consulting with the Splos team and with the, our site selection, we added that back in. And I think the Southeast Clark spot does have that score of 56, which also adds something to it. It has the same exact score. The only issue is the walkability. The last thing I will say is that I did emphasize, I did ask the committee right at the end before we adjourned. I said, so am I correct in saying to everyone here in this meeting next Tuesday that walkability is still an important criteria for us? So the Gaines School and the Krogers, for example, which are closer to Hillsman, closer to, there's a lot of sort of middle workforce housing in that area, is that still something that's important to us? Yes, yes, yes. We all agreed on that. So anyway, that's, I'm just adding that to John's presentation.
Thank you. Patrick?
That was another potential spot that I enjoyed. I liked. Do you elaborate on that?
The hospital authority one, that we can't put it in.
Yes. So the hospital authority sites were on the list of broader sites. There, I don't remember the addresses right off the top of my head. They're kind of across the street from those Gaines School sites, which puts them directly in that airport landing zone. And we did follow up with Mike Matthews with the airport to see if there's any way we could get around that requirement. And we got a pretty firm, firm no back from him that there's not really much flexibility to put especially assembly space within that landing zone.
Thank you.
But what a great place for a park, an East Side Park, right?
Well, I'm for one, I'm for one glad to see a library coming to the East Side. It is well-needed. I do have some concerns, though, about Southeast Park, too, what Commissioner Meyer said. Walkability is very important. I know to a lot of the constituents, one, I think I went to two of the listening sessions, and it was, it was kind of divided. But I know for, for the areas that I represent, it'll be kind of hard to get to the library if it's at Southeast Park because it's not in walking distance. You know, we don't even walk to Walmart. We get on the bus. So, but I'm excited to see it come.
Jessie?
Just have a question about cost for the next phase. When you're doing this analysis, what's the cost per site that's being analyzed? Like how much more are we paying to add a fourth site, basically?
Yeah, I don't know if I have a direct number for you. We do have some budget set aside within. So the budget that we have set aside was actually for five sites, because it can go up to five. And since we pared it down to four, we're actually going to save a little bit of money on the budget that we had set aside for the evaluation of candidate sites. So I, I don't have an exact number. We're still getting proposals back for all the work that has to be done, but that's the best answer I can give you.
And so the November timeframe seems to be rushed. Do you feel, can we delay until next year or? My perspective here, I just wanted to make sure, because we've got to spend millions of dollars on this library, and it's going to be a permanent fixture. I would prefer us to, to take our time to get it right, but that's just my opinion. But once it's there, it's there for us to love and enjoy for at least the next 70 years or so. But just seeing November is a little rushed, but what's your thoughts?
The one, the one true negative to delaying would be potential loss of the $2 million state grant. That would have a time limit. We don't, I think if we continue with site selection, if we have to buy sites, you can use grant money for that, and then we can move in design and use money for that. But if you say postpone it, they may pull that grant back for another library. Then you got to get back in line.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol?
I do want to emphasize that I don't know what the original number of parcels looked at was, but we looked at a lot of parcels. So I think in the committee, in the end, when we were like, okay, let's see what we get. At, you know, we put the Southeast Clark Park in, Park in, because it is, I mean, you can put, you could put a library there. You know, you could put a library there. And that might, you know, the ones that we, I might prefer, or Tiffany, or Commissioner Davenport on the East Side, Commissioner Taylor, are, you know, they might not work out, like, so what do we do there? I mean, I'm there every day. You know, for a while, we had the Green Acres one on there as well, but that was really a, a daydreaming selection. And so we pulled that one out and put the, the one on for the Southeast Clark Park.
Jessie?
Yeah, just wanted to ask, maybe when staff gives us their report in advance of the voting meeting, if we could get that breakdown of the cost per site? I mean, all these Splos projects are, you know, we're way behind the amount of money we need to build. And so if there's a site that members of this commission are already disinclined to really want to end up with anyway, if we can save a significant chunk of money to put toward the end result or moving a site, I'd like to know what that amount is.
I don't know if we've got cost estimates on each site at this point.
We don't at this stage. That'll be a part of the next.
No, not cost estimates on the site. Cost estimates to investigate each site. Like how much is it costing to go out and do all this?
You got 20 grand to plan.
Got your own site.
Yeah.
You know, if it's just like 10 grand, okay. If it's like 100 grand, maybe we should put that toward the library instead.
We'll put that in follow-up report.
I, I would say, and maybe this helps answer that question, certainly if we have to buy the property, that probably shoves it down on the, on the priority list. I mean, for me, it does. I mean, that, I mean, we're trying to have some money to build the thing, and buying the property is going to be an extra expense.
All right. Thanks, John.
All right. Site selection, part two, everybody. We've got the facilities modernization plan. Where are we? Where's the judicial facility?
Let's see. Let me switch over. All right. Name's John Semino. I'll be taking you through the facility space modernization now. So we'll go through the candidate sites, same agenda as the last one, just for the Judicial Center project. So first off, for the purpose, we'll review the potential sites information and then go through the five candidate sites that site selection committee recommended. We'll start, we'll go through this agenda, starting with history. History started off in November with an approval of the site selection criteria. We then evaluated the potential sites based on those criteria. In March, on March 23rd, the site selection committee approved the potential sites for the project. We then went into public input on those sites, had online and in-person input. And then based on that input, the user group's recommendation, the design team's recommendation, the site selection committee narrowed that down to five candidate sites for the project on June 22nd. The project budget you will see here, total available funding is $76 million. You can see how that's spread across the different line items. Total available for new construction down at the bottom is $44 million. Just a quick reminder that that budget is not sufficient to cover the whole program that has been, that is really the full need of the judicial system, so we'll likely have to pay for some phase of it. And we'll talk about that more as we go through the presentation. But this, again, is just a timeline that shows you that site selection process history. So we got the site selection committee and user group together, developed the site selection criteria, went to public input on those site selection criteria, then got them approved by the mayor and commission on November 1st. We then evaluated the potential sites, got public input on the potential sites, and then narrowed it down to five candidate sites from that list. And we'll talk about next steps down at the last slide. This map shows the boundary map for the site selection criteria. Just as a refresher here, it was really centered around the location of the jail and the location of the courthouse downtown, really keeping close proximity between those two facilities, given that this will have to be some sort of, or likely have to be some sort of phased development. We would want to keep proximity to both of those facilities in order to keep the operations of the judicial system efficient. So that's where that blue must-have boundary comes from. You'll see the dark blue outline is the highly-wanted area, which is focused around downtown. It's really a 10-minute walk from the existing judicial center is roughly what that boundary represents. And then you can, it's a little bit hard to see, but that downtown darker blue rectangle is the nice-to-have area, which is really centered around downtown, walkable from the existing courthouse. And so these are the site selection criteria. So anything that was in that must-have boundary, we looked at and weighted against these criteria. Again, the technical values are the design criteria that the site must meet in order to work. So we looked at all of these things, property area, the minimum area was set at. of these things, property area, the minimum area was set at two acres, looked at topography, utility capacity, zoning. All of these factors were looked at as we went through the evaluation of the potential sites. Here are a couple more that we looked at. And then, we also looked at community values, which really focus around how the judicial center fits within the framework of the community. So, looked at the location, public access, site visibility, making sure that it fit within the context that it was being proposed for. So, this list shows the approved potential sites from the Site Selection Committee. There were nine potential sites that the Site Selection Committee recommended. So, we went through all the sites that were in that must-have boundary, got it down to around 70 or so that we scored when we got out the properties that didn't meet that minimum area requirement, and then got down to this list of nine from that list of 70 or so that were higher scoring and had a good potential to develop the new judicial center on. Public engagement, so we got public engagement on those nine sites. We had online public input and in-person. The online input was open in May. There were a total 125 respondents to this survey. And then, the in-person sessions were held at different locations across the county. There were three of them, and there were only 15 people at the three sessions, which were mainly project stakeholders that attended those meetings, and not a great turnout from the public there. Public engagement summary, so this summarizes those results that we got from the online public input. So, down the left-hand side, you'll see all of the potential sites. And then, on the right-hand side, you'll see the blue represents positive comments on that site. The red represents negative comments. So, you can generally see how the public responded to each of the sites. And I'll go through some public input for each of the candidate sites. I won't touch on the others. Those are at the back of the presentation if, for your reference, if needed. So, I'll go through the candidate sites now. There were five of them. Again, the scoring will reset in this next phase of the process, so they're in no particular order. But I'll talk a little bit about some of the benefits and challenges for each of them generally, and some of the public input as we go through them. The first site is 355 East Hancock Avenue. So, this is the current location of the federal building, right across the street from the existing courthouse. This was the highest-scoring site, also the one that got the most positive public input. The benefits of this are pretty obvious, that it's right across the street from the existing courthouse. It remains downtown, keeps that connectivity between the two facilities, has good access to public transit, multimodal transit as well. The main challenge is that it's not owned by Athens-Clark County, so figuring out whether acquisition will be an option there. And there were some concerns in the public input about site access and traffic in downtown, which is a common theme, really, with, with all the sites. Next up, we had 2915, 2665, and 2555 Lexington Road, which is the current location of the Athens-Clark County Jail, an undeveloped site in between that was bought as part of the 2000 SLOST. That was a tentative location for the airport terminal, and then the existing landscape management facility. These were all put together because originally, they were all kind of separate on the potential sites list. We decided just to put them all together because we thought maybe there would be a way to use them all in conjunction with each other, and not just limit ourselves to saying one site works and the others would work, but they're not a part of the potential sites. So, we decided, since they're all Athens-Clark County-owned, just to put them all together to make it kind of one cohesive potential site. Some of the benefits here, I just touched on, it's owned by Athens-Clark County, which is a benefit. It's a large property. There are some environmental concerns and a stream running through it, but there's still a good bit of developable area, which we'll dive more into in the next phase. It's currently zoned to support a judicial facility. It's located along Lexington Road, which is the main corridor that links downtown to the jail. It's also right next to the jail, so sheriff operations would be efficient between the two facilities. Some of the challenges is if we were to develop that kind of bottom-left corner where the landscape management facility sits, it would require relocation of that department. There are some environmental constraints, which we'll dive into really more in the next phase. Also, there were plans for an airport terminal on this site, so we'll have to really work with the airport authority to figure out what their plans are and figure out how that affects the developable area of our, of the judicial center. Some of the public comments on this, some saw it as a benefit as well, that the jail was next to the courthouse for ease of transportation and operations, good for public transit. Some saw it as a negative, in that it sends the wrong image to have those two facilities next to each other. There were some concerns about it being outside of downtown, so a lot of the people who responded to the survey really wanted to see it downtown. And so, for all the sites outside of downtown, they, they gave it a negative comment. But overall, this one had more positive responses than negative. If it were to be outside of downtown, most people felt that this was the best site outside of the downtown area. Next up, we had 160 and 230 East Strong Street, as well as 550 North Jackson Street, which are current Athens-Clark County-owned surface lots downtown. So, originally, when we went out to potential sites, it was just 160 and 230 East Strong Street that were on the list. As we talked more with the Site Selection Committee, they felt that adding the 550 North Jackson Street would give us just more flexibility as we started to look at parking and building layout, and how it could fit on those three parcels and meet the needs for now and the future parking needs across those three parcels, just to give us another option to look at of how it all lays out. So, some of the benefits here, again, owned by Athens-Clark County, which is a benefit. They're already parking lots, so they're pretty flat, no challenging grades to deal with, which can be expensive. They're located downtown, which, again, comes with a lot of pros, in that they're walkable to, to the surrounding area, close to the existing courthouse, supports local businesses downtown. Some of the challenges is that they're all smaller sites, so it's three smaller sites, so it limits a little bit what you can do on the site. Future expans, future expansion will be a challenge. We'll have to look at expanding vertically. Also, meeting the parking needs on the three sites will be a challenge that we'll really dive into more in the next phase of seeing how it will all lay out on the site and make it all work. But those were some of the main concerns from the public, is that this site is smaller, so it will limit our options in the future, and how will parking work on these sites, as well as some added traffic downtown.
John, can I correct one of your challenges there? The lease agreement currently in place with adjacent apartments, that lease is only good for one year.
Okay.
So, it's not necessarily a challenge.
Okay.
When you look at it from that perspective.
Thank you. Next up, we had 484 North Avenue. So, this is the existing location, uh-oh, okay, existing location of the Piggly Wiggly and U-Haul Plaza off of North Ave. The benefits of this site is that it's a larger property, and that it's currently, or it's located right off the Loop and off of North Ave, so it's easy to get to from downtown, easy access for the sheriff off of the Loop. It's already developed, so there's no challenging grade variations. There's access to public transit. So, there's a lot of benefits associated with this site. Some of the challenges is that it's not owned by Athens-Clark County, and there's likely a high acquisition cost. There were some concerns from the public about taking a tax-paying business off the payroll to put a government facility, so take away that tax income. Also, the, there's a challenge that there's a couple of commercial developments, so figuring out how the building is placed on the site, and to still have that presence from the street, will be something just to work through as we get through it. Another concern from the public is that that grocery store, the Piggly Wiggly, is really one of the only grocery stores on that side of town. And so, what will the impact be of taking that out of service? But, again, Site Selection Committee felt that those benefits, and this one was one that was more of a toss-up, but they felt that the benefits outweighed the challenges with regards to this site. The next site is 120 West Doherty Street, which is the current location of the Doherty Street Government Building. You'll see that this one actually falls just below the minimum acres threshold, but was really looked at in conjunction with some of the other parking lots around, and making it all work that way. But it is owned by Athens-Clark County, which is a positive. It's currently zoned to support a judicial center. It has favorable access to all the downtown amenities, access to the existing courthouse, which is really the main positives. Again, the challenges are similar to the Strong Street sites, in that the area to develop is limited. So, that will make future expansion something that we have to work through and look at closely as we go through this next, next phase of the process. Also, figuring out how parking would lay out downtown with this site, and potentially using other sites to accommodate that parking as well, will be a challenge that we have to work through in the next, in the next phase, as we look through it in more detail. But the public comments on this one were similar to the Strong Street sites. They were actually a little bit more positive, but there were concerns about traffic being added, the future expandability. But a lot of people liked that it was downtown and an Athens-Clark County-owned site. So, those are the five candidate sites. Quickly, the next steps are for staff to, staff to analyze each of these sites, look at how the building would lay out, look at how parking will lay out. And because, as I touched on earlier, this will likely have to be some sort of phase development, as we go through this planning, we will look at how Phase One lays out, what the future build-out of the property could look at, look like, how parking is met across all the different parcels, for those that have multiple parcels. So, we'll really dive into a lot of those details. We'll look at environmental, if there's any environmental concerns, we'll look more into that. We'll look at traffic, and then obviously do a budget for each of these sites as well. And, again, we're just hoping to come back with that in November for your approval. And that is all. Open up for questions.
Patrick, I think you.
Yeah, I want to thank the committee for their help and staff. All y'all have some very lengthy, fun meetings. We scrutinized along this and narrowed it down to these, to these pieces of property. I'm still in favor of keeping up the courthouse downtown, and really like the Hotel Indigo lot, that area, the federal building, and maybe put some love in at the Piggly Wiggly on the north, on North Avenue. But I look forward to hear back from staff, from you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I guess, back to some federal buildings, one thing that you did not put down, the challenge is, I'm assuming people are still working in that building?
Yes, sir.
So, then, the relocation, where would they have to go? So, that's going to be a challenge if we do pursue that particular property. I guess another challenge would be, well, not federal government is willing, I'm not sure how that process works, you know, do we have, you know, have to go to Washington and lobby for that particular building? I guess the mayor know more, more about that than me, but I think one of the challenges, where would you put those people, once, if we are successful in obtaining that particular building and so on? That's one, that's a challenge. We should, we need to put on there.
I can speak to a little bit of that, Commissioner. I've had some great engagement with both Senate offices and with Representative Collins, and some folks at the General Services Administration, kind of serve the Interior Department. And they've at least been open to the concept. You know, I think in urban planning terms, you know, a great opportunity is to activate a core piece of four and a half acres of downtown that's really not activated right now. It probably would look like us swapping some property, so that ultimately, we would move more of our core of employees into the interior of town, and their employees might move to some other space. The bulk of the employees who work in that facility are U.S. Department of Agriculture employees, and they work in essentially this quad of the state, from the North Carolina line, really out to kind of I-20 in the Augusta area. And so, a lot of them are field workers who are doing water and soil sampling and the like. And so, they're not necessarily in the office every day. You might remember that at one point, this was sort of their customer service center, and so, hey, you got a new social security card there, or you got your benefits managed there. Of course, more than a decade ago, social security moved out to Prince Avenue, so. At least, initial conversations have been good. So, you know, following, hopefully, the positive vote in August, we would continue those conversations in a deeper fashion.
I had some, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
So, thank you. I guess I just want us to say, I'm going to say this, and I just want us to be careful and mindful of this. You know, we have, we, when we put this on SLOST, and we put it as a space modernization, and having a brand, a new courthouse, and then all of our government facilities move into the existing courthouse, whatever phasing is done, I don't want us to lose track of that vision, because I think it's a good one. We've seen, you know, from previous conversations that we had, the expense of keeping up some of these buildings that we own, and, and the money that, that folks have to put into it, to put in a roof, or fix some leaky, leaky, something leaking, or you, you understand what I'm saying. But I just want us to be careful, whatever we choose, to, to not lose track of that, of that vision, because I think it's a good, sustainable one for the, for the next, you know, 50 years. But also, I also want us to recognize that we don't have a lot of money to, to, to build this courthouse. And with that, with knowing that, I think we ought to look at, at ways where we can find some sort of partner to do it. We have a prime example of how we partnered with the ADDA on the Washington Street Deck. That was both a SLOST project and a, and a bond issuance project that's being paid back with the parking revenues from downtown. Currently, the ADDA actually owns, owns the parking deck, and we manage the parking deck. But once that, once that debt service is paid off, it'll revert back to the, back to the, back to the county. But, you know, there are things that we can look outside sort of the box on, and trying to finance the vision that we, that we hope to, hope to accomplish here. So, anyway, I just want to put that out there.
Carol?
Yeah, I, I noticed that the user group didn't have the West Doherty site on, but the Site Selection Committee added in. Can either you or Commissioner Davenport speak to that?
So, we were trying to, when we were whittling it down, descending it to the library at the one of those last minutes. But with the north downtown development coming, that property, and with the space modernization, with us moving potential employees to the, to the courthouse, that, that property came available. And the current courthouse with the parking deck is about two acres, and the Doherty, the government building is 1.95. So, we went ahead and included that as one of the potential site. Plus, it matches up with the Strong, Jackson, Doe Streets for potential build-out, if, if possible.
Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my three cents here. I, I agree with Commissioner Davenport that downtown is the best place, and, you know, largely why I hold that view, is because talking with many people who work in the courthouse, day in, day out, on any side of the courtroom, it's been clear, the consensus I've heard from everyone, is that downtown is the best place for this to be for a variety of reasons. And then, also considering how the budgetary constraints already have us really struggling to see this project through, spending money to acquire property doesn't seem like the, the best way to go. So, you know, similarly, insofar as this would be different from the previous project, I'd like to know what, if any, savings there are to reduce a couple of candidate sites. I think where I might differ with the, the Site Selection Committee is, we're already struggling to house our existing staff, so displacing three or four departments out of the Planning Department building on Doherty Street while this is happening, because the, the existing courthouse doesn't open up until this is built. So, where do they go in the meantime, is, I think, going to be an exceptional challenge. And also, that's a particularly small site, so, you know, I'm not super thrilled about adding that, that site on. In my mind, it's the, the federal, the federal property, and then the, the surface parking lots that are the real winners here. And, you know, if you just look at a Google, Google Earth image of our downtown, it's that north part of downtown that's just plagued by these treeless surface parking lots. I mean, they're, they're far from the highest and best use of any property, so converting those, to me, makes a whole lot of sense if we can't access the, the federal property. But obviously, making use of the existing federal building, if that's an option, would make a lot of sense. I'd also hope that whatever conversation happens with the federal government, we can talk about those surface lots that we have across the street as part of a negotiation about, you know, if they were to build somewhere else, or if we're going to try to go vertical with the parking on two adjacent parcels, something like that. But in, in my view, we'd do well to just kind of go forward with those two and cut out the other three. Either way, I'd still like to know what the cost savings would be if we did want more sites for the next phase.
Evita?
Well, I want to thank the committee for at least considering North Athens. If Andy was here, I'm sure he would appreciate the Lexington consideration. Thank you for showing us some love. I really would not like, and, and as much as I, I disagree with everything being downtown... I really would not like, and as much as I disagree with everything being downtown, I would not like to see tax dollars from businesses taken off the roll. We need those tax dollars to keep building up downtown. But didn't we vote on, and this is when I first got on the commission, weren't we going to do something on Strong Street? And we had all these presentations. What was that? Could you bring it to my memory?
Yeah, we had a prospective partnership with the Hotel Indigo ownership group, and so there was going to be a sort of multifunctional facility on that lot that sits right in front of Hotel Indigo that, of course, the Downtown Development Authority manages for us. It would have involved some co-working space, some economic development-focused space, and something like 45 sort of longer-term residential units for people who might be a visiting professor or might be in town, opening up a new industrial facility or something like that. Unfortunately, their financing fell through, and so that project went away. Was it five years ago or thereabouts was when they were unable to continue that partnership?
Well, I guess if I had to make a preliminary thought, since North Avenue and Lexington is out, I would think that the Indigo would be, that area would be prime. If the miracle happens with the federal building, I definitely could sort it out, but we do already have control, not control, what we have with the Indigo, ownership of the Indigo, so that would be my first.
Come full circle.
All right, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
John has time. We've got Paul Kramer coming up in a couple minutes, and he's going to talk about the Classic Center Arena's prospective third bond financing package.
I have to hit.
Looks like you got kind of second screen here, so.
Hey, evening. Good. Paul, thanks for joining us. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Take it away.
It's all yours.
All right. Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to come to the work session tonight. I will make this fairly brief. Our purpose tonight is just to provide an update on the project funding and also provide an update on borrowing number three that we had talked about last time I was before you. A bit on the developer, the developer update. Currently, we are out of contract with master developer. The way that contract was developed is in phases, so the first phase was the parking deck, and then subsequent phases would be allotted to them as long as they move forward on the dates that we had set aside. Their funding was to go hard on June 15th. Just prior to that, they came to us and asked us if they could have an extension. We extended what ultimately was three times and then said, you know, we can't just keep pushing this down the road. So we, they actually terminated that agreement. We can still reengage with them. In fact, I've got a meeting to talk with them tomorrow. We can also reissue the RFP on the parcels that we have. The important thing is that we still are in control of that land and can go out and seek other developers to come in and still move forward with the master development. The third borrowing, however, we thought it was important that it did a number of things. One, took care of the replenishing of the rock and the timing settlement that has been negotiated, covered the upfront construction option fees committed by the developer. We're about a year out from completing it, so we need to be sure that those things are here now so we can move forward with the arena itself. As you know, the arena, when complete, needs to have the bridge and stair so we can get people off that pedestrian plaza. This would do that. Would also complete the arena fully operational so that we can maximize the revenue of the venue itself. Covers all of the previously counted upon land leases, wage increase commitments, replaces temporarily the special tax district until we start allocating those sites going forward so that we are more in control of our own destiny and less dependent on the developer. Specifically, these are the list of things that would be included in that third borrowing. Should look very familiar with the exception of the bridge and stair, which we've added in, and then the 10 million which were the developer upfront fees that we were counting on to come in as a part of the overall master development. We have now met with the finance team, and we do know that we would be able to acquire this with a 20-year note at roughly 4.6. You know, interest rates change from time to time, but as of today, we are actually under that. So that number is a good number. And then the summary of revenues that it would take to cover that bond number three, we've had to replace things, so you may know that we have built a parking deck quite some time ago. That debt is now paid off on the parking deck, so the revenue that we have with the deck is ours, and we could pledge that going forward, as well as 80% of the net pro forma from the arena itself would cover bond number three. And then we needed to go back and make sure that we covered up whatever the developer was putting into the first two bonds. And in the beginning, we weren't really sure what Airbnb revenue was going to generate, but now we have history with that, and we know that we can add 120,000 to what we had previously had in there. And I know that gets a little confusing, so the total would go up to 600,000. And just in case somebody wanted to know, what did we actually earn this past year? It was 631,000. So if that sort of helps you understand, we do have the funds to be able to pledge that going forward. Increase in the arena naming rights. We now have the Oakview Group who does this in 48 other venues, and they have put together their naming rights sheet, so we have a better understanding of where we're going to go with that. We increased that line, as well as the parking revenue that would be increased from our parking deck. Again, currently, we do about a million a year in revenue, so we bumped that with the new arena coming in. And then our base hotel motel tax was up significantly this past year and the year before, so we know we could add more to what we had originally had in there, along with ticket fees and then the operation of the Classic Center itself, we are pledging. The board has voted to do that so that we can take the pressure off us in terms of the land leases and other things that we were pledging just to finish the arena itself. We know those things will still come, but they can come with a little bit more time, and we can still cover all three of the bonds with that which we already have. Just some quick reminders, again, Classic Center would still acquire the land leases, and in many cases, you could say we are highly motivated to do so, as we would like to replace the revenue that we're otherwise pledging back to the bonds. Will prioritize a master developer for the whole development. We still will do the service district, special service district, but that can take a little bit more time and not be so dependent on the revenue just to finish the arena itself. That can come back over time. And the full bond payments, actually, in Bonds One and Two, they don't start until 2026, so, again, we have time. And so, next steps, we would come back to the mayor and commission to approve borrowing number three on August 1st, and then seek mayor and commission's approval for that last parcel of property, which we spoke to you about before, and again, that would be on August the 1st. My understanding is there would be a subsequent meeting that we would need to come back and get the IGA finalized before we actually close on that final bond, so. With that.
Yes, John. Thank you, Paul. So can you walk me through what happened with the developer and why they backed out?
Sure. So just to take everyone back, we started this process with them almost a year ago. We went out for bid, they won the bid, and we were advancing things for them to actually begin building the parking deck in February. In fact, I remember it was Thanksgiving when we were finalizing the first LOI going through, and they came to us in like January and they said, "We're going to need more time to be able to work through these issues." So we reset the clock with the end date being June 15th, providing us ample time to work through the actual purchase-sale agreement and what they were going to do, what we were going to do, and we had worked through all of that. Remember, there was a signed LOI and there was a signed purchase-sale agreement. All of the terms and conditions had been worked out in the front, but they got right up to the end and said they needed more time. And when we asked why, they said, "Well, we need more time to look at our due diligence." Yet, they'd been given sufficient amount of time to do the due diligence. They said that they still had more traffic studies that they wanted to look at and that they were concerned about our ability to secure a tenant with their financing were really the two main issues.
So the tenant, is that the hockey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that was a big part of it, then not being able to get the contract with the hockey?
That's what they said, Mr. Culpepper. However, I will tell you this. I asked the question when they brought that up, "Did you ever, in the last year, tell us that you thought a tenant was going to be something that you needed in order to close the loan?" And they said, "No, we never brought that up, never once." And I said, "Can I see your parking study?" Because remember what they're lending on is the parking deck. They did share the Walker parking study, and I read 67 pages of it. It never once mentions a tenant. It never once mentions a hockey team. So why are they delaying? I honestly, to this day, I don't really know.
So when did we find out about the hockey not coming? I know you and I talked about, there was one originally, and then we don't have one now, so when did we find that out?
So, remember, we signed a fully executed agreement with an ECHL team. It, to this moment, is a fully executed agreement. They just have not advanced the funding portion of what they were expected to fund. So about that time, UGA was talking about the roof in the Stegman Coliseum having issues. So for a while, we paused and went after the tenant being the basketball team. And then, when it looked like they were going to rebuild Stegman Coliseum, we immediately went out to seek the final hockey team. Currently, we have a deal that is fairly well ironed out with Spire. They're out of Greenville for a professional hockey team, and we are just awaiting the final agreement now. We're gonna have a hockey team. Gonna happen.
So what's the timeframe on, I mean, us adding more money to the project? It sounds like the developer was, what they said, I mean, it sounds like the hockey was a big part of it, but we're adding money to the bond. When will we know something about the hockey? I mean, should we wait till we have a definite tenant before we increase the funding of the bond because we keep?
I would say no, and I'll give you an example. When the Classic Center came about, did we know who the 700 tenants were going to be a year? No, sir. Did we know who one of those tenants were going to be a year? No, sir. I can tell you right now, I have 1,200 people in that building. I can also tell you that we have just done one event after another after another, and I will tell you, we're going to do the same thing with this arena. OVG is the biggest partner that we could ever have, and we have them under contract. They have tentacles that go into music and into sports, and I am confident that that is going to come about. The problem we are at right now, the stage we are at right now, this building is one year from being complete. So to pause on anything is going to delay the completion of this building. And I am 99% sure that we will have that hockey team within a month's time. So I think what we need to do is stop being dependent on a hockey team and on some third-party developer, and we need to put the funds into this that we know we can finish this on time and be able to let sales and marketing do their job and fill that building.
Dexter?
Thank you, Paul. With the developer, had they put any money into this project yet at all?
That's exactly why we wound up walking away, Dexter. Their money was in escrow, but it was not hard money. It was not our money. It was just in an escrow account. That money would have gone hard had they completed that phase of the project and gone past the 15th, but they asked for an extension, and we gave them an extension, we gave them another extension, we gave them another extension, and never did the funds go hard, and it was at that point I said, "No more."
So just want to be clear, so they had not expended any money?
I didn't say they haven't spent any money. They have spent money, and I think that's an important point. They have designed the parking deck with Smallwood Reynolds. I don't know the actual cost of that, but that's significant. They also have worked with Nelson, another firm, to do the master development. And so they have spent a considerable, that's the same master developer that did the Braves' Battery area. So in those ways, they've spent a significant amount of money, but the funds coming to this project or to the authority or to Athens Clark County, no, sir. There was no money.
Well, my concern is, you mentioned earlier that we may have to do another RFP.
It's already done. It's just waiting to go.
Another RFP?
Yes, sir.
So what's to say the developer won't come back and say, "Well, you know, I put this money in, then we get into a lawsuit deal."
Well, when they terminated the agreement, they lost the opportunity to do that. Now, doesn't mean they can't come back and re-initiate and re-engage, but we have no responsibility to that developer as we sit.
Okay.
Well, my concern is, you mentioned earlier that we may have to do another RFP.
It's already done, it's just waiting to go.
Another RFP?
Yes, sir.
So, what's to say the developer won't come back and say, "Well, you know, I put this money in, then we get into a lawsuit deal"?
Well, when they terminated the agreement, they lost the opportunity to do that. Now, doesn't mean they can't come back and re-initiate and re-engage, but we have no responsibility to that developer as we sit.
Okay. Um, my second question, and again, I'm concerned, a couple of things. You know, I'm not sure how this would affect our bond rating. I think I mentioned that to you. And secondly, you know, sometime with projects, and I know we want all the bells and whistles, maybe one thing we need to really consider is what we need to, maybe we need to cut back on some stuff. And, you know, I'm a facilities guy and want everything up front, but, you know, another 12 mil, 15 mil, I got some angst about that, Paul, and I just think, maybe we need to look at some other options before we have to go and vote on this. As you, you know, again, that's just one man's opinion.
No, I think that's fair. We did look at that today in terms of, would this hurt the bond rating? And Judd, I don't know if you want to share, I know you were in the meeting with me, sort of the outcome.
Yeah, the financial advisor met with David Boyd, and I don't want to speak for David because I would hope he'd be here tonight, but I think he may be out with some sickness. But, and what I heard in their discussion was, David feels like we're in a very solid position, we have a very high fund balance, he doesn't think this additional offering of debt will affect our fund balance, I mean, will affect our credit rating, which I know is a concern of me and the commissioners. So, but I think, again, I'm speaking for, but that's what I heard. I repeated that to David Cheatwood, who's our financial advisor, David called on the phone saying, "This is what I heard, right, David?" And David said, "Yes, that's what we discussed." But, I'm not sure that addresses your total point, though. That's one element of it about cutting back, but that's, you know...
I think the other big deal that I know our finance director has said is that he would not be comfortable if this bond were going out 35 years. This bond is a 20-year bond, so much shorter. And I want to address the other bells and whistles, if I may. We're not adding in bells and whistles. We're adding in the things that are going to be required if we are to do sport competitions. The ancillary, the extra locker room, for example, you can't do a tournament without that other locker room in there. It's just not gonna happen. So, if you were to say, "Hey, let's finish it, but let's not finish the locker room," there are consequences to that. Similarly, the ability that we have, remember, you are somewhat insulated from this because the authority is willing to take on the additional debt until we sell those other parcels of land. That's what this deal does. So, what we want to do is make sure that we have not put bells and whistles in, but that we have put sufficient things in there that when our tenants want to rent it, the ability for them to rent it for the purpose that they want is there, if that makes sense.
Blaine, did you want to follow up on behalf of finance?
Yeah, I waited for that last point. I know that our finance director, some of his concerns earlier on were the term of the bonds going out 35, 38 years, and also that they were based on a forthcoming agreement with the developer, which is pretty speculative in nature. This is less speculative as far as a revenue's concerned, and it's not as long a term, I think it's 20 years or so. Some of the concerns that David voiced earlier are not quite as apparent now.
Yeah, I was gonna clarify that, that was one of David Boyd's concerns, that the revenue string was so speculative with the developer. And that's one of the things we reviewed today in the call with David Cheatwood, was Paul went over his new revenue string, which he's talked with y'all tonight about.
Carol, Mike, and Patrick.
Yeah, fortunately, I had a printout of a document, agenda item from Classic Center from April 25th, and I just, you know, saw something that isn't being brought up here, and that's, there was already, we had already discussed the mention of the bond. So, what we're doing now, that bond that you potential, or the loan was 13 million with developer funding of 11 million, so now you're basically saying, "Hey, we're not going to depend on this developer funding, so we're gonna up it to 11." Now, I will ask you, just out of curiosity, you know, when I add the developer funding to the 13 million loan, that comes to 24 million, a little over that, and now we're at 25,800, and so I am curious about what the additional...
2.8 is the bridge and stair.
Okay, on that?
That's the only additional thing, and your point is a good one. You're no longer dependent on the developer that had phases that might come true in the future. What you're dependent upon is a 28-year-old Classic Center that has been in this town doing what it does, having the revenue to back it up, to be able to pay those bonds.
And I would, following up on that, I would just appreciate if there is something in writing from our financial director that just gives an overview of this, because I think our big concern here is what kind of risk we're putting the county in here. And then, of course, the other thing is that, you know, if I had a binder full of all those agenda reports on the arena, it'd be a lot thicker than this one inch, right? So, are, you know, what are some other unexpected changes that might happen? Are we gonna, are we, is something gonna go up again? We're gonna need no, like, can you give us any guarantee that this is it? The prices, we're not gonna go up anymore? You know, the original budget was 89 million or something, now we're at about 145. We have our 34, we're still just kicking in the same, and you're figuring out this fancy financing. But, I think it would be helpful, you know, I know you perhaps can't do this, but to give us some sort of guarantee that we're not going to be going up on the price again. You know, it's a year out, let's finish this.
I think that is the intent of this final borrowing. That was the intent when I presented it to you, but if I could sit here today and guarantee that, I should probably be in a different profession. I will tell you that everything that I know, this should be, this should be the final. And in terms of, you know, the financing, the original estimate of what this building would be came from two different developers. And then, we presented it, and the amount of funding that the county has put into this is that $34 million. Everything else, we have found ways to be able to move this project forward. So, I'm proud of what we've done, I'm proud of how we've done it, and I'm proud that the authority has the ability to back this up when it wasn't smart to move forward with that developer at that time. But again, I want to remind you, we haven't lost anything. We still have those pieces of property all around where this public asset is going in, and the value of that property is only going to continue to go up as this develops.
And I'll just point out that we did put in the 34 million, but also, we put in the value of those properties that are there.
Yes, you did, yes.
So, we're certainly put in a lot more than 34 million.
We're partners, no doubt.
Well, I guess I would say this, Paul, I would, I mean, you have on your thing here, can reengage with negotiation with the master developer? I mean, $12 million, to me, is something that I would try to reengage somebody on.
We absolutely have a meeting with them again tomorrow, Mike.
Well, I say that, and, you know, and I don't know what the situation's like about needing more time or something like that, but also recognize that if you have to send out another RFP, that's gonna take some additional time. I also recognize that getting settled in with another new developer may also pose some of the same challenges that we're having now. So, it's, I mean, so I don't know that I would walk away from $12 million right off the bat.
None of us want to. We absolutely want this to work out, if it can work out, but it has to be, has to be the right thing for everybody involved, and if they come to the table in the right mindset to work this out, that would be great. But what this does is it takes that uncertainty of any developer out of the equation and replaces it with the authority being the backstop of that.
Well, it still seems to me you're gonna be at the mercy of any developer, just like we were at the mercy of all the rock that was underneath the thing.
Well, the other developers would pay back the authority, but the first line of defense in paying these bonds back would be us, much like it is with the parking deck and the downtown development authority. Same, same kind of relationship.
I don't know, we'll see.
Patrick?
Yes, thank you. So, Commissioner Myers and had me asked the question I was gonna ask, especially about the bonding and the master developer. Is one of the reason why the master developer asked for an extension, was because of the rock? Is that one of the reasons?
No, sir. It was, what he told us, it was two main things. It was one, that he was concerned about the financing because of a tenant, and two, he was concerned about the cost that it might, he might incur through the transportation corridors when he built 1,300 space parking deck. Athens Clark County requires certain things to be done, widening those areas, putting in slip lanes, certain traffic controlling devices, and it really boiled down to those two main areas.
Okay. I had another question. Well, just more of a comment that, when it comes to a third bonding, my concern is for future projects that the county has to do, we have a lot of infrastructure needs, we got a T-spots project coming up next year, two years, I believe, and I'm quite sure those are gonna require bonding as well. So, can we get a future outlook from David Boyd for our future, something about future projects? If we finance this bond, how future bonding will affect us as well, just not for, just this current bonding?
Well, there's a lot of infrastructure needs. I mean, it just, there's several different ways to pay for it, really it'd be up to the commission to decide how they wanted to balance those different sources, you know, whether it's general fund dollars through capital. Or, I know that, for instance, stormwater is something we talk a lot about, and that's coming up in another week or so to hear about that level of service. You know, T-spots is coming up, so you're right, Commissioner, we try not to borrow money when we can, and so I don't, I don't know if, we're still looking into what our actual lifecycle liability is for all of our infrastructure. So, I don't know if we can answer that question right now, it depends on which way the commission wants to go.
So, what I'm trying to get is just throughout with our general fund, we can't, the amount of needs in this community, we can't afford it. So, we're gonna have to figure out a way to finance it. So, my concern is if we issue more bonds, will that lower our rating, increasing our interest rate, causing us to pay more in those finances? Can we get an outlook, you know, from Mr. Boyd?
Patrick, might it be helpful just to see what a sort of scale of prospective future borrowing could be?
Yeah.
Maintaining our same credit rating? I mean, if we said, hey, you know, are we in a position to borrow another 20 or 30 or $50 million, is that the kind of scale of interest that you'd have?
Yes.
That level of understanding? Okay. Ovita?
Thank you. I've been, I've been sitting here quiet because I've been supportive about the arena from day one, and I'm still excited about it. I just am, I'm not as confident as I was at the very beginning. I think the whole rock thing threw me for a total loop. And if we are, you know, if we're just keep bumping into these, and there's things that can happen, I guess I'm about like with Patrick, there's gotta be a way that we can get some foresight of some things that we don't want to happen, but could happen. And the bonding is very important for the things that we need to do in other communities that don't get no resources, District Three, District Nine. So, the bonding is important to me. I hope that you can do what Patrick is requesting, but I'm not, I'm not as excited, I'm still excited, but I'm a little bit more leery because apparently, somebody don't know something or has prepared for those things. We just don't seem like, and like I said, the biggest thing for me was that whole rock deal. We should've known that, we should've been prepared for that.
So, I think, and Keith might be able to speak more directly to this, but I think we did know what the rock was. We did know the rock volume, and my understanding is that we came almost to the dollar of what the rock was. I think a part of what we tend to want to forget is where we're building this and what that land was. This was a site that was listed on the state hazardous wasteland site, and through what Georgia Power did, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars of cleanup. And then, what we wound up doing, coming back in there, was cleaning it up even more. It has now been delisted, and what we had to do, it wasn't just blasting of the rock, but when we took those things out, they had to go to a lined landfill, which does cost a lot more to take it out. And that only had to happen if we found sediment or certain conditions as that happened, and we did. And so, that's where your added cost came into this job.
And that's all I'm talking about, the added cost.
Yep.
That's all I'm talking about, is the added cost. I would have felt a whole bunch better when this project took off, that that was out there as a possibility of this is gonna, this was gonna pop, cost us some extra money. And that's what I mean, and I think that's what Commissioner Davenport has taught. What are the things, the worst things that can happen? And, you know, and is, and we may be able to deal with the worst things. We dealt with the rock, but I'm just saying, the things that we can know, for every pro, there's a con.
Sure.
In everything, relationships, pro-con. Every time someone speaks to us, they always talk about all the pros. And then, when the cons hit us, it's like, "Oh, wow," you know? But they're legitimate things that happen, and the only thing we're asking is, what are some of the cons? And then, we can prepare for them, and we can deal with them if they pop up. That's all.
I understand.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was pretty startled by this figure for the bond doubling since our June meeting. I mean, it's gone from 13 million to just under 26 million. And also, the master developer walking away, I mean, over the course of the past many, many months, couple of years, you know, the master developer has been cited as this kind of driving the force behind how this, how this project's been shaping up. So, I guess that leaves me with kind of one major question for you, Mr. Kramer, and then I have another question for Attorney Drake. In addition to the concerns shared by colleagues, the effects of the revenue of the special service tax district, is that special service tax district still in place? The 2% revenue still gonna get generated from whatever gets built?
Yes, we are still trying to move forward with the special tax district. That will come before you, is my understanding. Judd has that on the agenda coming up, still to advance, still to move forward, which helps us pay this back.
My understanding was that, as that has been in development, the master developer was in agreement with that happening. So, I guess I'm curious, you know, if they're walking away, what's the likelihood that we lose that opportunity because that's part of what would make it less attractive for someone else to come along?
We plan to tie, well, we plan to tie the special tax district to the bond, the third bond that's being issued, and validate the creation of that special tax district as part of the bond validation proceeding. So, we actually think that will make it more concrete that that special tax district will be in effect. So, we're not, I don't think we're concerned about having to have the consent of the next developer. We feel good about tying this into the third bond issue, which is kind of an advantage, is a good thing, I think.
Okay. I mean, what assurance do you have, Mr. Kramer, that another developer, developers are gonna come along to develop these properties? Because the parcels are worth a lot more when the arena gets completed, but only if there's something built upon them, otherwise, they're not generating any revenue, whether, you know, special tax district or not.
So, I think all we tried to do is not, I can't control what has happened. I can't control that the developer didn't do what he said he was gonna do. But what I can do is bring you not just a problem, but a solution. And so, I've gone to my board and said, "Look, if this developer were to walk away, I know we'll sell those other parcels. I can't tell you exactly when that's gonna happen. Will it be with this developer, the next developer? Some of those things take time. But what I can do is make sure that I put our... But what I can do is make sure that I put our, our revenue stream up there to secure this final bond, so we can complete this project the way that it needs to be completed, and not just bring you a problem, but also bring you a solution to how we move forward and complete the arena, top to bottom.
So, so you're speaking with a lot of confidence here. I mean, is there any kind of analysis that's been done that shows why these properties are definitely gonna be attractive for developers to come along and, and build these expensive projects?
I, I think the answer to that still remains, but the answer to whether we can pay the bonds back, we've got years of history of revenue streams that can show you that we can pay this bond back. I think as far as the property around that public asset, I think there are a lot of models that show when you put a public facility like this, that the things around it develop almost every time. And again, you can just look at the classic center. Remember what was around that classic center when it was built way back when, and what has come about and been built all around that public facility since that investment was made? And I think that same example, Mr. Hool, has been done again and again and again in communities all over the country.
So the payback provisions here, it says, I'm looking at slide seven, special service tax district, two hundred and eighty thousand. I mean, where's that coming from if nothing's built on those parcels? If it takes longer than we're hoping for a developer to come along?
That's why in this model, what you're looking at right here is we took out everything that was the developer, for now.
So all those numbers?
If you see all those numbers add up, it's one million nine hundred and thirty thousand. Took it out.
Oh, that's a lot. Okay, that's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And then I replaced it with the things that you see above, which are tried, true, proven, they're there, no doubt about it. In fact, we're pushing in Classic Center Authority-operating nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and this year, we're probably gonna do two million dollars in net profit from, from the center.
Okay. My, my other question's for Attorney Drake. Attorney Drake, in your view, has the commitment to the wage floor that we've been hearing about repeatedly in these presentations been captured anywhere in writing to guarantee that it's gonna happen?
It's in IGA, so we could hold the commission, the authority, Classic Center Authority accountable for that.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be captured in any kind of additional document? Okay. Thanks.
Paul, just kind of following up on some of the conversation, you know, when we were talking about the judicial facility, kind of in the earlier discussion, you know, Mike referenced wanting kind of the full bore version of it, not the lesser version, which, which I fully agree with. And I feel the same way about Classic Center, you know, I want the high-quality version, not the modest quality or low-rent version of it. And, and so I, I think these facility components obviously, you know, make it a more attractive, a more saleable property to all of the prospective users. Obviously, the bridge and stair is, is simply a functionality issue, you know, we just need to be able to, you know, safely and effectively let people depart from activities. You know, so all of that makes sense to me. You know, what, what I would wonder is, as we reengage with a, a development, private sector development partner for the parcels, would we either see an amended agenda report where you might be asking for a lower borrowing based upon that reengagement, or a more aggressive repayment schedule for the, the loans if the full, approximately twenty-six million dollars were far in?
I, I think either of those are possible. My, my honest opinion is we should probably move forward with this borrowing, knowing that the center has the ability to pay it back. But I think it would be really smart when we borrow these funds to make sure that if we did have an income stream, that we could pay it down early. And I know that's something that can only be done if we put that in the bond from the get-go. And I think that would be really smart to do that.
All right, Paul, thank you. Thanks to staff members, board members.
Thank you.
All right, y'all, we, we will go ahead and move on to our special called session. And then just as a programming note, we'll take a quick break between the special called session and the agenda-setting session, given that we're gonna bump up to the eight fifteen time when we normally take a little break. So staff will get the screen up, and I'll relocate here.
So in your mind, that IGA is solid enough that we don't need to capture that in the bond or anything?
And actually, in the last, when Paul was making his presentation, I thought he said that at night, when I first wrote the presentation on the financial advisor, he mentioned hadn't been able to meet that commitment.
Yeah. He still had it in his presentation tonight.
Oh, yeah, okay. He must have missed it, yeah.
I'm just, with, with other things changing in a big way, I'm worried that that's on the, on the chopping block.
Yeah. I'll go back and look at it, though, and, and send you the language. We could always, if you want to try and bump it up, make it more concrete, I'm happy to look at that.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move into our special call session number one. Again, it's Tuesday, July eighteenth, and First Order of Business, and we, of course, want to welcome back Clerk Spratlin, who had not been joining us for the evening meetings, but is back. James Spratlin, back in City Hall, glad to have you here, Madam Clerk. And I, I think she recalls that now's the time to call roll, so we're gonna do that.
Here.
Here.
Right.
Fisher.
Dana Baffey.
Yeah, yeah, he stepped out for a minute.
Here.
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 All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we have four items on our special called session today, and so we have public input for the special called session, and terms of public input will reflect what you'll experience later on in the agenda-setting session. Anybody who would like to speak to any of these items can speak for up to three minutes. There's a light in front of Clerk Spratlin. It will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and red when your three minutes has expired. Now, thank you for your time. For anybody speaking, I'd ask everybody else in the audience to just listen quietly in, in both response and during their time, because we need to make sure we expedite the evening. So would anybody like to speak to any of the items on new business tonight? If so, now is that time. And just give us your name and the item that you're speaking to. Evening.
Yes, my name is Michael McLendon. I live in Princeton Mill off South Lumpkin. Excuse me, I had a summer cold here. I sent each of you through the form on the website, some comments about item number two, but I want to emphasize a couple of points. One is, I think it is a responsible use of funds to approve technology improvements for the courtroom, which is one part of the action to use ARPA funds. But I think it would be irresponsible to fund two positions, additional positions for the district attorney's office, given the fact that that organization has demonstrated over and over its incompetence in terms of leadership and management. The second part of that is that pouring more money into an organization that's dysfunctional is not gonna solve the problems of efficiency and effectiveness within the office of the district attorney. And the last thing I would add is that by approving these funds and these two positions, you're essentially building a case for adding to the base budget for FY twenty-five or beyond. And as we know, in previous meetings, you've had lots of questions about the budget for that organization in itself. So I would suggest you approve the funding for technology modernization, but not approve the funding for those two, additional two positions.
Thank you. Does anyone else here speak to any item on the special called session tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll begin discussion, but we need a motion for suspension of rules since this is first reading of these items?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Fisher for suspension of rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to the first item, and this is the American Rescue Plan Act, funding for the scope of service for the Boys and Girls Club. You remember in a previous meeting, we allocated funds, we're gonna have sort of two phases. We're gonna have this award for scope of service, and then we'll drill down again in a, a future vote. I don't know, Manager Williams, if you want to add a little bit to that?
Well, there's been a lot of discussion and refinement, and we really appreciate the work between staff and, and the Boys and Girls Club. And, and we felt like that would be prudent to make sure that we understand that the commission, this is the scope that they'd like to see in furthering this ARPA money into the community.
Thanks, Manager Williams. Anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, um...
Scope of service.
Scope of services for the Boys and Girls Club of Athens. I do wanna, can I ask a question about...
Yeah, let, let me, let me get a second first.
I second it.
All right, I've got a, a motion from Commissioner Fisher, second from Commissioner Thornton. All right, go right ahead with your question.
Um, will we get a chance to talk about financing for, um, how much money that we're gonna, um, give them upfront moving forward? I'd like to know what that amount is right now, and, um, what we gonna find them moving forward on the front end? Startup, I guess we can call it startup money.
And I may not have, I may not have been in the last discussions on that point. I think the idea was that we would not give them all the money, but enough to get them going to cash flow. But Assistant Manager Jones, do you have any insight on that?
I do not.
Okay. Okay. So, but if there is any indication from the commission, if you want to share that tonight, you know, the contract documents yet to come, and we can work through some of your ideas.
Okay. Well, I'd like to put a motion, if I'm in order from Mayor, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we extend at least two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars upfront for the startup costs, because we're asking them to open up two other community centers, and also operate the two that's already in process and install the programs. I wanna put that out on the floor, that we allocate two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for startup costs for this particular, for the Boys and Girls Club.
Assistant Manager Jones?
Commissioner Fisher, the Boys and Girls Club asked for twenty-five thousand dollars upfront. Are you wanting to up that?
Yes. Yes.
And I'm gonna second it.
All right, so the amended motion is to approve the scope of services with the provision that they will be forward-funded two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, seconded by Commissioner Thornton.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, we're approving the scope of services and the budget, is what the gen item says.
That's correct.
And then we would be adding, changing the amount of upfront money. I just want to make sure everybody knew we were approving the budget as well. It was in their gen item.
That's why I want to make sure I was clear. Ask for that request, though.
Paul, Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I guess, I guess the first is why this is, like, why the rush instead of, I mean, I'm excited about this. I'm excited to see this move forward. I really appreciate the hard work of my colleagues and staff and the folks at the Boys and Girls Club to get us this far. And I understand the urgency, which has, you know, long been here, so I'm glad we're finally, you know, working and responding to that as soon as possible. But why, why special session urgency instead of talking about it tonight and then voting on it at the regular session on August first?
Well, we're gonna vote on, we're gonna ask you to consider voting on the contract on August the first, and that has sort of been our target all along. We wanted this extra step just to make sure, because there's just been different discussions, you know, there, there wasn't a formal RFP that solicited this submittal. And before, we went through the trouble of pulling the contract together, we just want to make sure that we had the approval of the mayor and commission on how much, or where the money was gonna go and for what purposes.
Kind of those bullet points.
So then I guess that might dovetail with my second question, which maybe doesn't require holding up action tonight, if we can somehow maybe wrap it into the, the motion, if the motioner would be willing. But, you know, I'm curious about the evaluation component of this. So I'm looking at specifically, you know, I guess there's this, this, so if you look at page eleven of the PDF, or if you're looking at attachment number one, starting on page two of attachment number one, you know, there's the steps for this project, and there's the step three that's called evaluation, but then there's step eight, which is pre and post assessment and case management. So I guess really, when I think of evaluation, I'm really thinking of that, that step eight. But, you know, I'm looking at some of the criteria that's captured in the performance measurements on pages five and six of that. And I just don't see much about violence prevention. There's a lot inferred here that, you know, if we achieve these things, then violence will go down. If we achieve better school attendance, violence will go down. But we're not actually capturing anything in here that's measuring violence or a lack thereof. You know, maybe the closest thing we have is fifty percent of students will have an increase of perceived emotional support and community connectedness. This will be measured through pre and post testing. But I, you know, I'm wondering, well, what about incidents of violence? Both the easily measurable, things like shootings that we know about in the community, or family violence calls to the police department, but especially the not easily measurable stuff, the stuff that I was hoping we would be digging into with a three million dollar project like this, things that are not reported to police, which might be investing more in that evaluation, getting that qualitative data from the, the youth involved in this program on their sense of safety and security, how many incidents of violence they've been involved in or a witness to, how many incidents of bullying they've been involved in or a witness to, things that we're not collecting data around now. And I imagine there would be some kind of, probably budgetary impacts, where we would need to be investing more in that evaluation component to collect data beyond just sort of a, fill out a sheet of paper at the end survey. So, you know, I don't know if anybody can speak to the, the violence prevention component of this program and how we're planning on tackling that?
Manager Williams or Assistant Manager Jones?
Well, I was just gonna speak specifically to your concerns that there weren't indicators that express that, like the shootings and whatnot. And Commissioners Fisher and Taylor both brought that up when we were talking about this early. And, you know, I mean, we can easily give you the shootings. I don't think these are the kids that are doing the shootings. And we can, we can test that. Now, if you want to go into more about the bullying, then I think there's a lot of fodder there. We could partner with the school district and perhaps look at, you know, those incidents that, that happen at school. I don't know. But as far as the, the actual, the shootings and the gangs and that type of thing, I, I think you may see an improvement over time, perhaps, as you continue to invest generational in these kids. But the four hundred kids or so here, I mean, when you look at where the shootings are happening, or, or who's doing those shootings, I don't think they're, they're gonna be necessarily this age group or perhaps these kids.
Yeah, I mean, I guess shootings is one of many violent elements, if you will, you know? And I, you know, my hope is that the impact of increasing funding in our community for this program, I, I understand this is everybody's hope, is that we will see a reduction in violence over time. We will see an increase in safety, in security, especially for our youth, especially in parts of the community where there is a lot of violence, gun violence or otherwise, intimate partner violence, family violence, bullying. And if we're not finding a way in this quite expensive project, you know, essentially half of our remaining budget, to start to collect that data, I guess it begs the question, you know, when will we? Or are we just gonna, two years from now, also ask the police department to give a separate, subsequent work session presentation on shootings, and then we can infer for ourselves whether there is any relationship? I mean, I, you know, I, I feel like designing this program in a way that's more directly getting at the heart of that issue, in my mind, is, is an important thing to have built into the, the framework of it.
Commissioner, just in terms of kind of thinking about the natural next steps, would some of that experiential pre and post data be something you'd be interested in seeing in the contract itself, which again is...
Yeah, yeah. And maybe also something that captures, you know, these agencies that they'd be partnering with, the police department being one, but also CCSD, who probably has some amount of information, although maybe they're not aggregating it as data around bullying, you know, is there a way to be partnering with those agencies to collect and, and, you know, correlate that, that data as part of this?
Particularly vis-à-vis the program participants, obviously.
Yeah. And I think, you know, to your point, I mean, we definitely need that qualitative element, right? Because there's all kinds of stuff that won't be called into the police or, or captured in a, in a report quantitatively, so I think, I think of both. But I would just hate for us to not be building that into the front end.
Commissioner Thornton?
I, I am agreeing with Commissioner Hool. I am agreeing with Commissioner Hool on this, because when we talked about the ARPA money and youth development, I think we had to say it about, I don't know how many times, we wanted youth development and anti-gang violence. We wanted it written in the title, not just youth development. So those kids that you said probably are not part of the problem that we see with gangs. If you, if you just kind of stroke it in, and I don't know how to do this, but I really thought the anti-gang violence was crucial piece of this RFP. I really thought that this would be a challenge also for the Boys and Girls Club, because they're gonna reach some kids, or would like to reach some kids. As far as the kids not being part of this group of kids, we're, we're seeing data, six-year-olds are carrying guns or know about guns. We're seeing more in Barrow County, that at the last gang meeting that formed, they were using ice cream trucks to recruit kids. There's a, if we don't spell it out, it's not, it's not going to give us or capture the data we want, but more important than the data, the deterrence that we want. It has to be clearly spelled out in a way, goes back to your first gang violence, babies don't, town hall, babies don't come out in gangs, they get recruited. So I think that, I don't think that's a far stretch from the Boys and Girls Club, making sure we have some kind of component written in there. The other thing we passed in the budget was the mental health support for youth and families that have kids that have been impacted by gangs. If we have a young man, he's in a gang, he's killed, but what does that do for his brother or his sister? So there's also money, and we haven't discussed how that was going to be rolled out, that can support the work if the Boys and Girls Club wants to take that on as a component. So I'm still bothered by the little girl whose eye was shot out. I'm still bothered that there was no help, there was no follow-up for her and her family. And this would not be somebody you would think would be in a gang, but she's impacted by it. And we need to support those folks. So I'm quite, this might stretch the, the scope a little bit for the Boys and Girls Club, but I know they could handle it if we spell it out.
Well, if I could, so this is a pretty involved scope, and I was responding to Commissioner Hool's point about shootings as perhaps a data point. And that is, that is the most extreme that the violence takes in our community, and I did not mean to summarize what this scope is around that by saying that these kids aren't involved, because this is obviously aimed at children to prevent them from wanting to join the gang violence. And so if you'll note in the scope that this is built around a delinquency prevention initiative, that is a framework of the Boys and Girls Club of America, and not only are they gonna implement their components of it, but my understanding in the scope is that they're gonna also not just give money to nonprofits across the community, but those that can help them implement this. And one of the, the objectives that they are hoping to achieve is that 80% of the students that go through this DPI, the Delinquency Prevention Initiative, will show increased knowledge and skills to, you know, resist joining of gangs. So there's very much a piece of that in this scope. I just mean, I'm just telling you all from an expectations that, you know, within six months, you're not gonna see maybe a one-to-one reduction of people served and shootings go down. I mean, it's, it's more complicated than that. But I, you know, this scope is very much aimed at, at trying to prevent the joining of gangs, in my mind.
Well, I'm sorry, you know, I've been out of town, and I, I'm probably talking, I'm sorry, Mayor. Raise my hand.
Couple other commissioners on tap.
I'm sorry. I know, I probably should have read it in more detail, and I didn't. But I, I know if you don't say it, if you dance around something, it doesn't happen. It does not happen. We gotta be real clear, this is one of our objectives, to prevent and decrease gang activity. You almost have to say it and not just imply it. And I don't think that's a big change from the scope. This is the intention of the scope, I'm sure, or one of the intentions, not at me, Robert. This is one of the intentions, but I just think we need to spell it out, so when we speak, we're speaking it out. So I'm not asking you to change the scope per se, I just would like you to enhance the wording to make sure that we're, this is a population that we want to target.
That the emphasis is appropriately placed.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am. Got Commissioner Taylor, then Commissioner Myers.
I would like to say thanks to staff and to Manager Williams, because he really helped us out with understanding and getting our vision out with partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. And I think that this is going to be a great opportunity for us not to only partner with the Boys and Girls Club, but also with the school district and also with DFACS. To Commissioner Hool's comment, when you said about the bullying, I think that that's a great opening for us to partner with CCSD and the counselors that we have, who serve our students on a daily basis, who knows what's going on within the schools, to get us that, that information, as well as working with the Boys and Girls Club with their after-school program. Also, to the mental health counseling, I think that this is going to be a great opportunity for us to also partner with the Athens Housing Authority. This is premature of me to say, but I'm excited to say it, so if it's okay, I'm just gonna say it. That Housing Authority and the Boys and Girls Club are working together to provide additional space for not only mental health services for the community, but also drug treatment facility. It was used for teen matters. Then, and again, it's premature, but I think that this is all a great opening for partnerships with three major entities here in Athens, Clark County, to be able to serve our youth in a whole totality, not just within the schools, but within the community, as well as within the family structure, with partnering with the Athens Housing Authority. And so I'm really excited to see this go through. Me and Patrick, or Commissioner Davenport, are products of the Boys and Girls Club, and so I think they're pretty efficient. They've got two commissioners sitting up here. So I'm excited. Again, thank you, Manager Williams, and to staff, Commissioner Fisher, Reverend Finch, dream team. I think we've got something.
And to your point, Commissioner, of course, we have under title only on the agenda-setting agenda, a forthcoming MOU with the Clark County School District around exactly these matters. I'm really excited about the evolution of that. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I am, I just want to start, I have some specifics, but I have, I want to start by saying the concept, the values, the goals of all this are something I embrace 100% clearly. But I do have some questions here that are specific. I guess I've gotten even more detail oriented in this time off here and reading over the agenda item and such. So in the next stage, where we're gonna be looking at the contract, I would like to just see as much detail in there as we can get in there, both for the Boys and Girls Club, so they know what are the expectations are for themselves and so forth. So to be as specific as possible in there about outcomes, detailed budget, and so forth. So I'd like to see a whole lot more in there. In terms of the DPI program, the Delinquency Prevention Program, I am concerned that the, the timeline that is in the agenda item that the proposal that was put forth that we're looking at is, is a little too optimistic, because it has you doing with this Delinquency Prevention Initiative, it looks to me like you're basically convening people in the community who are working on these issues, you're coming up with a plan to address delinquency and identifying critical areas, and then you're making RFPs based on these to include some other people in the community, after you've put together your critical areas where hopefully we'd have the violence prevention. It just seems like, like, I'd like to see a timeline on some of these things, and I know it's here, but right now, some of this is starting in this timeline on September 1st, and the hiring, and there isn't even anyone, you know, hired to lead this thing, to convene people. It seems a little optimistic, optimistic. The process, I'm fine with looking at in here. And I did see that in the last draft that we looked at, there was actually specific mention of gang prevention, like activities at some of the different sites on the weekend. And I don't see that in this new draft, and maybe, maybe I missed that. But there, those are, I'd like to make sure that we do this in a very thorough, clear way for all the parties involved on this. This is a lot of money. And the other thing is that the DPI program, and I don't know how tied the Boys and Girls Club is to exactly what's laid out in that document from the national organization, but it says it differs from their targeted outreach program in that it goes after kids who are already in the Boys and Girls Club programs. And I know that there's, you know, in here, this mention of outreach and getting more kids involved. I am, you know, as someone who was greatly impacted by some of those presentations that we saw from the police department, I'm aware that there's some non-public housing communities on the east side where, that were identified as places where there's a lot of gang initiatives. So I kind of, gang initiatives, that's probably not the right word to use, but you know what I'm talking about. So I'd like to see a little bit more about how the Boys and Girls Club, if they're gonna reach out into communities that would have been identified for us from the police department, and how that ties in with the DPI program. What kind of, like, in the details of what we might see in the contract, what kind of reporting back can we expect? Is this DPI model going to end up with a, a plan, you know, that's a written plan? So just some of the details, I'd like to be able to look for them in what we vote on, when we vote on the next round of this. And I did have one, like, specific question, we don't have to get an answer to this, but on that budget that's out there, at the end of the budget, like, there's money for programs that don't need a RFP, and then there are some for programs, another bigger pile of money for, will require RFPs. And so I wanted a little bit more help understanding that do not need it tonight. Anyway, that's, I'm just looking for this to be fleshed out in a little bit more detail, tied into the gang activity, have expectations laid out ahead of time, so we all, parties know what we're going into, and what community groups know we're going into as well, because I have had several community members who are working in other areas. So I'm good with us moving to the next step, I just want us to anticipate as much as we can what the specifics will be.
You good, or did you want any follow-up from staff?
No. I just want to talk.
Second round comments from Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Hool.
Yeah, so let me just sort of close this out in why I pursued using the Boys and Girls Club to do this initiative. One thing I need all of us commissioners keep in mind, they are gonna be partners, nonprofit partners, what I call, they got boots on the ground, that's gonna be a part of, part of this funding. I think, you know, we got to use a holistic approach in order to deal with some of these things that we're trying to deal with, I think, but you got to start somewhere. You know, we, you know, we, and I'm gonna be critical of us, I'm part of this commission now. We have set on youth development money, two years now, and with nothing being done. We've given money during the summertime, but now we're trying to give money that's gonna impact year-round. So to, some of you all's concern is, I think, once we get this started, and once we start moving forward, then we'll start seeing some impact. And I think it's not just gonna impact Boys and Girls Club participants, but it's also gonna impact young people in our community outside the Boys and Girls Club. That's why it's gonna be critical for those nonprofits that got the boots on the ground, that those kids that may not go to Boys and Girls Club, but they would be a part of this initiative. So I'm optimistic, the Boys and Girls Club been around since 1959 in this community. I just think it's important that, you know, they're not a ragtag type nonprofit. So I just want us to be clear on that, and I think, once we start seeing some of those results, we'll be able to understand, you know, what the goal is and what we're trying to do. So I just want to put that out there.
Assistant Manager Jones, you had an observation?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fisher, I have a point of clarification on the $287,000 upfront. I just got a note from one of our staff members saying there is federal regulation out there that kind of caps it. So if I could ask, you know, can we have some time to figure out what that number is? My understanding right now is between $75,000 and $80,000 upfront, which we're allowed to provide. In addition to that, we intend on doing advanced monthly payments, if that's okay.
So, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm understanding this ARPA money was unrestricted. I went back and read, I had not seen a cap. Now, if I missed that, my bad. But if it's unrestricted money, and I think sometimes we need to understand what ARPA was for. ARPA initiative was set up for us when communities are in what I call distress, you know, we get those monies out of them pretty quickly. So I just never seen a cap. So if there's a cap, please let me know, but unrestricted funds, from what I read, was unrestricted funding, so.
And we will certainly do more investigation into that, and if, if that's okay, we'll get back to you, just maybe in the follow-up and let you know.
Because my concern is, and let me say this, and again, and you all do, y'all have done a great job, and I really appreciate what we do, but I don't want us to be sitting around three or four months, they have not got these resources. You know, I want, you know, once we approve the contract, I expect for us to move pretty quickly in these resources out, so. But again, if I'm wrong on that, just let me know, but I just thought with the unrestricted money, there was no cap on what we can provide to nonprofits.
We'll get back to you on that for clarification. Yes, sir.
And if we need to revisit that in the contract phase, because sometimes what treasury guidelines will do is say that, you know, you can allocate the funds immediately, but forward funding is a sort of separate question within those treasury guidelines.
Yes, sir.
Apologize, I've got, Commissioner Hool had follow-up, and then Commissioner Thornton.
After this, I apologize, I'm gonna have to run to the restroom and right back, but I'll be back. I'll be listening to you all on the speakers outside. So, yeah, I guess to try to be more specific in cases helpful, and please also clarify for me whether this can be done in the next phase of the contract without having to be modified at this phase, assuming numbers are amenable, or if there's language that would need to be captured in the motion. But to start, I just want to kind of clarify, I'm looking at the PDF, page 15, it's attachment number one, page six. And if you look at bullet points one and four as examples, I think those are the most applicable ones, they're not numbered, but the first and fourth one, where it says that pre and post tests are how we're gonna be measuring these things. I guess I'd like maybe a little more information on, you know, who's, like, what are those? Who's doing those? Because when I hear the pre-post test, I mean, that can be as simple as just a one-page survey that's kind of handed to everybody at the beginning, and then handed to everybody at the end. Is that, all that is, or is it more robust than that?
And Athens Club Director Robert Finch is here, I don't know, Director Finch, if you want to provide a little bit of context.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Reverend Robert Finch, I'm the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club here in Athens. I'm amazed that there seems to be some misunderstanding about the DPI model. The DPI model has eight steps to it. And essentially, the first step really is, it's a step number one, is a step during which you will gather all of the quantitative information that you need in order to move forward in the DPI model. During step one, that is the time we go out and we speak to all stakeholders, anybody, whether it's the sheriff's office, whether it's the police department, whether it's the court systems, to gather all of the information that we need in order to develop a plan. And once you get beyond that, once you get all of that information, you get beyond that, once you get all of that information, then you develop your plans. So what you're asking us to do, Commissioner, is to, um, complete step one, and then come back and ask for the money. That's, that's essentially what is being asked. But the DPI model is not set up like that. In step one, it's, that's where we go out and spend the time out in the community, gathering all of the information that we need, and then develop the program. That way, we can be laser-focused on those needs, uh, out in the community. Does, does that make, does that make sense? Does that kind of clear it up?
I'm not sure. Uh, I'm worried that maybe we're talking past each other a little here. So, I guess I'm curious, when, when this document says, uh, this will be measured through pre-post testing?
Right.
So who would, who would be doing that testing?
We would be, we would be doing the testing, but we won't know what to actually test until we've gone out and, and performed all of the analysis and the interviews of all of those agencies and individuals who have the actual information. If you look at page six of the DPI model, it says, "The interview community agencies and individuals. As a first step, talk with knowledgeable individuals who have local perspective and delinquency issue, including young people, making an effort to contact organizations and individuals likely to have firsthand knowledge about delinquency," and, and it goes on, and it lists the police departments, it lists the juvenile justice system, it lists the school district, it lists community-based organizations, it lists city and county officials, business community, youth, parents. So all of those individuals are going to be in step one. And after we have completed step one, then we will then go to step two and begin putting the organization, the preparations together. And that's where I think, um, there is some misunderstanding. What you say is true, you, we need to do that, but that's a part of the DPI model, but what I think I hear you saying is that...
So what I'm just looking for is an understanding of what the evaluation component of this whole program is going to be. Is it going to be very minimal, or is it going to be robust, most especially when we're looking at violence? And the, the only things that seem related to that in this document, page six, is 80% of students will show increased knowledge and skills to resist gang recruitment and develop positive social behavior. This will be measured by administering pre-post tests during the program. And then further down, 50% of students will have an increase of perceived emotional support and community connectedness. This will be measured through, through pre-post testing. Um, so that brings to mind to me kind of two main concerns I'm hoping to address. One is, what does that process of pre-post testing look like? Because if it's just giving everybody a one-page survey, so we can then have data to show, you know, here's a nice pie chart that shows 50% of students feel a bit better based on this one-page survey, that in my mind is not sufficient for evaluation. And then the second part of that is, in my mind, if violence prevention is to be centered in this program, we don't just want to look at their skills in resisting gang recruitment, and we don't want to just look at their perceived emotional support and community connectedness, although of course, those are very important, so I want to keep those in. I, I would imagine that we would also want to look at other things related to being involved in or witness to violence.
Correct.
Which can be defined fairly specifically if we wanted to list, or more generally. I mean, we talk a lot about shootings, and that is obviously a key part, but it's not the only one. We talk a fair bit about bullying, that's obviously another key part, but those aren't the only two. So what I'm looking for, essentially, is for page six of attachment number one, to have more things included related to violence that would be surveyed in a pre-to-post test or otherwise, and for more clarification on what that evaluation process, that pre-post testing would look like. Is, are we contracting with, it sounds like you all are planning to do that yourselves, is what I heard you say. And so if you're doing it yourselves, I'm curious, how are you doing it?
Well, the, the, we can put, Commissioner, I can put anything down there. You know, I can, there are many data points, I think, that are, that are going to come out of the assessment period, that, that would be step number one. And I can go down there, we can put into the contract as many data points as we can, can think and dream of, but, you know, they won't be exhaustive at all, because we will not have gone through step number one. And step number one actually gets us where you want to go, but with some certainty. In other words, we're putting our energies where they need to be in identifying those data points upfront, rather than just putting, placing a hodgepodge of, of, of data points down just to satisfy the contract.
But step number one, you're referring to the community assessment?
That's correct, and...
I mean, I guess I, I don't feel like we need a community assessment to know that shootings are an issue. We don't need a community assessment to know that bullying is an issue. We don't need a community assessment to know that intimate partner, family, domestic violence is an issue. So, if there's already a document that's listing two examples, the ones that I mentioned, around resisting gang recruitment, and, and, sorry, I just lost the page for some reason, um, resisting gang recruitment, and, um, what was the other, the other one?
I think there was one about sort of better emotional health.
Community connectedness, right? If you've already got those listed, why would we not at this stage also list other things related specifically to violence as what we're going to be doing throughout this whole thing?
Commissioner, I think the community assessment will better qualify, uh, those data points as being legitimate. Yeah, we can place those down, but to what extent are they? And so we have to determine that, to what extent each of those data points you just mentioned, uh, play a role.
I don't think, well, okay, I'll leave it at this. We, as a commission and the community for a long time, have been pretty clear that violence is an issue, and this money is specifically earmarked for youth development and violence prevention. So I don't think we need a community assessment to know that violence prevention is part of what we want to have built into the framework of this. I'm, I'm really just trying to ensure that we capture somewhere in writing that that will still be centered, and that we're not just looking at data points that the school district already collects around attendance and completion as like our primary measures for success, and then a one-page survey about whether people feel a bit more connected. Because that, to me, doesn't achieve the transformative impact that we're trying to achieve with this ARPA money.
Commissioners, we kind of think about that, sort of buffet of experiences of violence, and we've talked about a lot of those elements that, that we know that people on the streets and in classrooms are experiencing. Might it be helpful, given that we had some case studies that were part of that DPI document, to just see some of those prior pre- and post-tests, kind of prior to the August 1st vote on the contract?
Yes, I think that would be, that would be...
Well, I don't think we're suggesting that it's going to be a one-page, we, we never said in our documents or in the proposal that it's going to be just a one-page, uh, document that, that, that's meaningless. All, everything that we do at the Boys and Girls Club since 1959 has been meaningful. We're one of the most well-respected organizations in Athens, Georgia, and, uh, to suggest that we would put forth a program that is not legitimate and not capable of producing the outcomes that we say, I take issue with that.
Well, just to clarify, I have not at all suggesting that. I very much think that you're a reputable, you're a reputable, well-established organization, has done a lot, and I am very glad that we're moving forward. I'm, I'm eager to move forward in this project. I think Commissioner Fisher and Taylor have led the way on us taking action on this money we've been sitting on, to Commissioner Fisher's point, for too long. Um, and I think that you all are an organization as equipped as anyone, probably better than most, to see through a transformative impact.
Thank you, Ken.
I, I absolutely believe that. I am also aware that routinely, evaluation, this is not a Boys and Girls Club character flaw, this is just the realities of what happens in, in programming like this. Evaluation is often the thing that goes underfunded. And, to Commissioner Thornton's point earlier, we've had to reiterate as a commission repeatedly for two years, that we wanted violence prevention to be centered in this. And so what I'm asking for, not as a distrust of your organization or the work you would do, um, but to make sure that we are all on the same page, so that you hit the ground running, doing exactly what we've been intending all this time, I'm asking for language that really specifies how violence prevention is going to be measured and evaluated in this, in this, in this program.
I think definitely it's clear that that whole spectrum of experiences of violence is something that we want to be conscious of, you know, as we think about our young people and reduction in all of those elements.
I'm very sorry, I'll be right back.
That's okay. We've got a couple more commissioners, um, Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Myers.
I'm going to pass, uh, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, um, well, Commissioner Hul is leaving, but I, but I think, I had, I had a point originally, but I, I want to make this other point, because I think there's some miscommunication going on here. Um, if you look at what we're looking at, there's actually four initiatives, and two of them have to do with keeping the boys and girl having more centers and continuing the kind of program that you already have, as well as some weekend programs, and those are two of them. Then there's a DPI program, and it's, and the subcontracting with other organizations to help with that. And so I, I kind of, I mean, I might be speaking for you here, thinking that when you're talking about the DPI, there's going to be, uh, assessment objectives, and, and that's going to be developed in one case. There's also going to be an assessment, I assume, of what's going on in the Boys and Girls Club at your centers and the weekend programs. And so maybe there's, you know, we've been focusing on the DPI part, but there is part of this that's, that is a continuance of your work.
Mm-hmm.
And, and in fact, when I was looking over this DPI thing here, actually, it has something in it, which I think is really important. Uh, I think this is a step, I don't know which step this is.
You talking about the eight steps, one of the eight?
Yeah, yeah, one of the eight steps here, but there's, um, I think it's in step six, and support members, I don't know, it's on page, it's on page 11 of this, um, document with the DPI model, which I think is really important to capture in the, um, in what you're doing, um, what, this, this all looks like it could be wonderful, but we know how this money, you know, you have, before we know it, it's going to be next year. Um, and we will have had this program, and we have to be thinking beforehand about the continuation of what we're doing. And I know part of the DPI, DPI model is a continuation and looking at resources, that's on that page. Um, so I hope that that's included in, I think that's really important. I mean, it says it's going to be here, so I'll assume it's going to be important in what kind of document is produced by this. But I do, I do feel like it's going to take a little bit longer to do this kind of assessment than you have in that, that original outline. Um, and I, and I guess to my commissioners as well, my colleagues, is looking at the continuance of the funding for the, um, centers after a year from now, and that we need to be thinking about that and working with the Boys and Girls Club to have some strategies, because we know, it'd be really nice to think we solved all the problems between now and next year, but there'll still be kids who need activities to do after next year.
Commissioner Myers, I thank you for, for making that delineation, because the truth of the matter is, you could actually just separate, just take the opening of the centers, just out of their whole argument, and focus just on the DPI, and you've pointed that out.
And, and it's, the, the budget is, is split up that way.
It is, that's correct.
So I think, I think that'd be good to, like, in the budget details, to make that clear, which parts are going to which initiatives in there.
Commissioner Thornton, you had follow-up?
Um, I was just going to say that, um, I think, that I think that, I think we're all talking about the same thing, like, you know, just kind of going around in circles with it. I think by the time this comes up for a vote, there should be everything intact. Um, I don't think there was no intent, Jesse and I agree on very little, but, but we do agree about the, um, the violence piece. Now, how we worded, or how you, now you know. Maybe you did not know how strongly we felt about the, the, the gang stop. So, and you wouldn't know. Now, I'm going to comment on Commissioner Myers' point about how this is going to be funded, you know, we got to look down the road. Manager Williams, we have in the budget our grant writers. Those positions are empty, and these may be a resort, a resource for any of our programs. We have to get those grant writers on board and find their monies to help all of the nonprofits and profits wherever. But we, when did we, when did we do that? Four years ago? Man, about four years ago. We really need those grant positions, because our general budget is not going to do all that it needs to do. We need to keep being able to support these organizations that support us. So, to answer your question, um, on your statement, the grant writers are crucial. They've been crucial.
Commissioner Thornton, the, I have a very, very active and committed board at the Boys and Girls Club, and last year, when I made the request for these, uh, funds for the opening of the, of the two centers we have now, and the ones that we're getting ready to open, uh, my board is fully prepared to do what it continues, what it always does, and go, goes out and, and tell the story and, and ask for support from other areas. So, at this time, um, we would love to get into the general budget, you just put some ideas in my head already, but anyway. But, uh, we are prepared to, to, um, do what we need to do to continue this programming.
We, we've, we've seen a lot of good programs, but when, when, but when funding goes away, it's just as bad as if the program was never there.
Right.
And those are the things that I think that Commissioner Myers was bringing up, that, and these public and private partnerships are so important now, because money's tight all across the board, but, um...
And Manager Williams, I, I know we have at times had those grant funders' positions filled, is that the case right now?
Are they filled?
We're about to fill them.
Okay.
We are. And we've, we've gone out several times, and we've finally got a couple of candidates that are going to fit.
That's right. I mean, we've advertised, y'all. I mean, it's not that we've been sitting on it. Um, it's been difficult, uh, but Assistant Manager Jones has been, uh, working with HCD staff, and I think we finally got some good candidates, so.
Glad, glad, we're beating the bushes. All right, there is a motion on the floor, there's a second. Um, we, of course, understand that we would like to forward fund up to $287,000, kind of understanding that we may have to review those Treasury guidelines. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, second item on our special called session is the judiciary request for ARPA funds, and of course, uh, we've gotten a letter from, uh, federal officials that this is allowable expense. Is there a motion on the floor?
I, I just want to ask a question, if I could, here. Um, so the, um, the record, in the report, it mentions, uh, the money's good from June 1st to December 31st of this year. Does that mean all of the money has to be spent, or is that, or the, is that, how does it, in the letter that they sent to us?
So these are state funds?
Yeah, it says, uh, the effective date for additional work begins June 31st and will end June 31st. So with the, you see, you see what I'm asking, right? If you've got those two investigative positions in there, does that have to be spent by the 31st? I know you can spend the audiovisual stuff for the...
2026 for our stuff, but I, I don't...
You said that, I had the same question. I mean, I think it's different.
Yeah, I have the same question, too.
I think it is different. Um, let me see if I can confirm that.
So, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, should, I mean, if we, and was this recommendation from the total, the circuit of the judges and the DA, or?
Yes.
Or how that kind of?
Judge Norris is in charge of, superior, the chief judge of the Superior Court, Eric Norris, is in charge of conveying what the intent of these funds are, and working with the commission on that.
So if we have to spend it by the 31st, I know there's no, I know it's not going to be a problem with the, with the capital stuff, but with personnel, how is that, how is that going to work for us?
Well, first, let me say this, I just got confirmation, all the awards, the award that has been given calendar year '23 does need to be spent by that time.
By the end of '23. So what does that mean for the personnel positions?
Yeah.
Well, that, this is, they have to reapply for funds. So there's a, there's a term for the funds, and then they continue to reapply for them, and they, um...
And those state funds are eligible by, through the end of '26 as well.
That's right.
And, and these are funds, of course, that flowed from the federal government through the state.
And I don't want to hazard a guess on that, but I think it's so that they don't come at the end of this program with a lot of unspent funds at the state and have to return to the federal government. So they're, they put terms on it, and so you can, you can apply for those funds, and then if you want to continue, a continuance within the overall federal umbrella, then you have to reapply for it.
Okay, okay. I suppose that answers the question, but maybe, I don't, I'm just, you know, are we, are we, should we not just fund it at half a year and then reapply for...
In September, they will apply in the next cycle for '24.
Okay.
So this is sort of an amendment this year, to be able to spend down the funds. Uh, the bulk of it, obviously, is not going to be spent towards two positions, it's going to be for this audio video, which can be procured in that time period.
Right, about 106 is going towards the, uh, what it says in here for the, for the two positions. And that's, that's two positions at a full... And that's, that's two positions at a full year, a full year salary, am I right in saying that? But it's not, but we may not get the full year, full year salary.
But they'll reapply for that in September for, because the new term starts January 1st.
Okay. And I guess I'm wondering, should we not be putting something else on the list? Just fund those for half a year, put something else on the list that gets us through that, that half a year? I know in our budget, we had an audiovisual person to manage all the new audiovisual stuff that we're getting.
I could certainly ask Judge Norris about that.
Well, and I'm wondering too, within the DA's office, there's invest, there's assistant, legal assistants now, are all of, are, how many positions are there, there now and are they filled?
My recollection from that personnel chart we had is that those, I'm just going to call them civilian positions, were the ones that tended to be more occupied than the attorney positions.
Well, I understand that, but, but are they filled? I mean, if we.
But any positions that are funded by ARPA at this point will be in the September application for next year, so they want to continue those through the end of the process.
Yeah, I completely understand that. But my question is, if the DA has some positions right now as classified as a legal assistant, are those positions vacant or, and how many positions are there? And are they vacant or are they filled? I guess I'm trying to understand.
And I don't know the answer to that question right now.
Would you like a follow-up from Judge Norris about the kind of plans for the next year, next calendar year?
I'd actually like some plans for what we're doing for the next six months with these dollars.
Well, this is under the purview of the, the circuit.
Do we need to vote on this today?
Um.
I mean, can I not wait till August 1st? I mean, we're not going to, I mean, if there's no, I mean, it's two weeks from now.
I'm not aware of a deadline between now and then.
I just think we, I mean, we've asked some questions that we don't know the, I'm going to make a motion to hold until August 1st.
All right, motion to hold until August 1st, there's a second from Commissioner Hul. Other questions that we might want to ask Judge Norris, Commissioner Myers?
Yes, I did have some things. One, was this request reviewed by the Judicial Council locally American Rescue Plan Act funding? Because it mentions that this coming through someone else. It also mentions in one of those documents that the, the new 742,000 must be spent on what was in the grant application. So were all these items then in the grant application and we can't just add other things in? So maybe making sure we know the answer to that question. And the other question was about the time, but the, the grant application, according to what I read, we don't have, we have to spend it on that money. And so that needs to be clear. And of course, if it is only for six months, we need to make sure that we're only setting up these positions for six months until we have the other funding.
Any other questions you'd like forwarded to Judge Norris, Mr. Hul?
Yeah, I do want to understand, so my reading of this agenda item is that these two positions have been applied for to try to address the backlog because of the vacancies in the office. So are we essentially authorizing two additional positions for the DA's office that will be part of our budget next year?
Yeah.
If we pass this? And my, and then if so, in my mind, why not replace two existing vacant positions with the two that we're paying for with this?
This doesn't obligate you to fund them next year. If, if the funding does not come into being, it doesn't, doesn't obligate you to fund them, there's, so, I mean, I'm sure there'd be that expectation, but.
Yeah, well, I guess my expectation would be that these positions wouldn't be necessary if they filled the vacancies since the point they make in this agenda item for why they need them is because of the vacancies. So, so, you know, if it's, if it's just to take care of the backlog and given the vacancies, why don't we use this ARPA money to fund two positions that will replace two existing vacant positions in the budget?
And maybe a follow-up question would be is, can these funds be used to supplant existing local general funds? Because that would be what would be suggested, is that you'd be kind of removing general funds and replacing those with federal funds.
I am eager to do what we can to help the DA address the backlog, given the vacancies, but I am not eager to expand an office that's struggling to fill its existing positions, so.
Very quickly.
Adding on to that, in the facts and issues, there's, there's, there's a point about the legal assistance, three parts points about the AV, but there's nothing about to address the assistant district attorney. So I think what we're saying is we need some background information here.
All right, there's a motion, a second to hold until our August 1st vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we go ahead and prove the 646 with audiovisual separated and then put this on hold till August 1st?
So you're asking for a reconsideration?
Yes, motion to reconsider, um, agenda item.
To divide the question?
There's, there's a motion to reconsider, is there a second?
I second.
All right, it's a motion to reconsider, second from Commissioner Thornton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're reconsidering, there's a new motion on the floor to fund the AV equipment and place on hold until August 1st the personnel.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Hamby, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. All right, item three is a kind of protocol that we go through every year, this is an ordinance assessing taxes for the year 2023, as requested by the Clark County School District. I've entertained a motion.
Uh-oh.
Motion from Commissioner Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Myers. Any comment?
No, just curious, if we did not approve their millage, what happens? I'm, I'm just curious, because I don't know.
Attorney Drake?
What do we got? I think the superintendent chair will be, I think it's a ministerial duty we're required to perform by law in order for the tax commissioner to be able to present the digest to the state revenue commissioner. So they would, if we really took a hard line, they would probably file a petition for mandamus against us, to ask us, the court to direct us to do it. What's already our duty.
Yes, curious.
I, I'm in court enough, Commissioner Fisher, I got to tell you.
I think the community got a real issue pending on this. I did not know.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Fisher.
I need to read the ordinance, Ms. Mayor.
And go ahead and read the ordinance.
An ordinance to levy NSS taxes for the Clark County Board of Education, for the Clark County School District, Athens, Clark County, Georgia, for the year 2023 and for other purposes. And just to note, it's at the rate of 18.8 mils. The point is missing in the ordinance that was on, online.
It's not 188 mils.
It's, yes, 18.8 mils. I confirmed that this evening with the attorney for the Board of Education, and I've sent you a revised version, Madam Clerk.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, superintendent says thank you, I'm certain. All right, item four is a resolution of the amount of $25,000 authorizing settlement. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, I've got a second from Commissioner Myers. Any commentary?
Nope.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Before we adjourn special called session, do want to note, we're very happy to have the auditor Gavin Hasomer here with us tonight for his first official duty in front of the cameras. And I'm very glad to announce that we have a full bore audit committee forthcoming. Of course, already Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Fisher have agreed to be on the audit committee and they'll be joined by Zerona Thomas, Carl Blunt, and Beth Higgins as members of that committee. And at our first Tuesday meeting beginning of August, I'll have an assignment and meeting scheduled for the body, so very excited for that. Do I hear a motion to adjourn special called session?
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Fisher, a second from Commissioner Taylor
to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, at 8:38, we're going to take a 10-minute break, we'll be back at 8:48, everyone.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We are here again. It is Tuesday, July 18th, and we're going to begin our agenda-setting session. The agenda-setting session has several segments, the consent agenda, old and new business, and then planning and zoning items. We're going to have public input on the consent agenda, then we'll have public input on old and new business when we get to that section, and then we'll individually have public input on each of the planning and zoning items after the staff review of each of those items. First order of business is to ask members of the commission, would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Eight?
All right, seeing none.
Did I say eight? I said eight.
Eight, I apologize. All right, Commissioner Myers, any others?
Can I take off two as well, just to speak to it very quickly?
Absolutely. All right, so would any member of the public like to speak to items one or three through seven? One or three through seven? All right, no takers. All right, we're going to go ahead and ask members of the public, would you like to speak to any item of old or new business? So that is two, eight, and nine through 23. Two, eight, and nine through 23. It's hot out there, everybody's weary, I understand. All right, we're going to move on. Commissioner Myers, item two, what would you like to provide with us?
That's coming from the LRC report, and that's, I'm fine with leaving it on the consent agenda. We're basically just adding the vaping and a new definition onto that, and so I'm fine with that. I did want to tell the mayor, might as well do it here publicly, that I'm going to follow up the Heart Association. People spoke with us as well about how our smoke-free ordinance is not as comprehensive as those that are in municipalities like Savannah, Atlanta, Augusta, Richmond, Buena Vista, Chambly, City of South Fulton, et cetera. So I'm going to follow up and talk with you about the possibility of sending it back for a quick review on that. We didn't want to hold up the addition of the e-cigarettes to the indoor smoking ordinance. So I just wanted to give you an FYI on that.
Perfect. I saw somebody from that organization that mentioned the same, so be glad to look at a further assignment.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that back on consent? All right. Item eight, go right ahead.
Man, this is getting late, and I'm looking at all my notes here. So this is the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Appliance Initiative. I'm fine with leaving this on the agenda, the consent agenda, but is this an example of one of these, or did I read it wrong? These grants that we're approving after it's already been put forward? No, I didn't, I'm reading it wrong?
We want to apply for it. It's a formula grant, and the pre-application submissions are due by July 31st.
Okay, yeah. Maybe that's what I'm, because we'll be voting on this in August, and that'll be done by that, okay.
Well, if I could. So the actual grant applications aren't due until January, but we're trying to, you know, I know it's a day later, but we're hopeful, you know, and if there are any concerns, certainly tonight, please let us know.
No, there aren't any concerns. It just was sort of a reminder to me, I know that this is basically a energy, money from the Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, and that would be used for, get money to low-income homeowners who have received weatherization or energy audits and help them pay for the heating and cooling systems. So I'm really glad about that. I was curious how that would work with some of the other programs that are out there right now, like the Georgia Power and the other, the federal low-income tax credit on heaters and water pumps and so forth. And so I was just curious how it was going to work on that. And I also just wanted to use it as an opportunity to see if we could get sort of an overall update. I was pulled at the Clean Energy Plan, and I realized that it's been a year since we passed that, and if we could get some update in the next month or so on the Clean Energy Plan initiative. And I will bring up the point as well that we don't have a, I might have this in some other comment, but I'll bring it up now. You know, we don't have a, I was curious who the user committee is for the SPOS, the Clean Energy Program. Money on that is on that user committee, and whether or not we needed to continue something like our CAB so that we would have a body that would keep laser-focused on this money and help with the Clean Energy Program and our staff that are working on that. I feel like that's, you know, that's a big issue for me, but I get distracted by these other 250 issues, and so I just want to make sure that we're staying on top of that.
Other programs can be layered on with this program as well. And good news here, sustainability and HCD are creating some synergy, working with each other. So the CDPG home funds for rehab will also be tied into this as well.
Yeah, and it mentioned working with two existing nonprofits who are already working in this area, and, right, so that's great. And I think it's just going to be, I know that I'm trying to get some of that money, and it's a little complicated to get it, and any kind of help that we can give people to get those funds that are out there, it'd be great to know how that's happening down the line.
And if I could also, of course, this is federal money and not subject to the gratuity clause, which we all hear a lot about, so it's a great way to push that money into the community and help folks directly.
Yeah, heating, but it's for homeowners, not renters, and it's for heating, cooling, water pumps, and something else.
Yep.
Water heaters.
Water heaters. Oh, and converting to, from gas stoves to electric stoves.
Is this based on income?
Yeah, so it's income-qualified, owner-occupied, in high-energy-burden census tracts, so there's several.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with this back on consent?
Yeah.
All right. You heard it here first. Moving on to old and new business, number nine is also an LRC report. Commissioner Myers, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, that's the digital signage and billboards. And we actually, you know, surprised Assistant Manager Jones with this one because he, you know, thought we might be on this for several months. But what we learned is that if we address the digital billboards, we'd have to address digital signage throughout our signage world. And at this point, we did not feel that that was a good use of commission efforts. And so we advised to, what did we do? We recommended that the mayor and commission pass this out with no action, the review of the sign ordinance to consider the digital signage and billboards.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just in a future cycle, I may ask for some kind of more narrow-framed view of signage specific to sort of venues or similar operations. We, of course, met with Classic Center earlier tonight, and certainly one of the kind of functional realities of an arena is that you're going to have to, in the contemporary world, have some kind of easily changeable signage, and I know that other venue operators would like that opportunity too. Not with the frequently-changing kind of signage that you may see out in the universe, but some of those that you just may change on a daily basis when you know that they're different events that are forthcoming, so.
I would just advise to pull that attorney's office in quickly on that because that's where we got the very helpful information about the way we would have to broaden that.
Be glad to, definitely. Thank you. Everybody okay with consent?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 10, Commissioner Davenport, is a GSC report?
Leave that off the consent, I believe there would be some people who want to make a, I'll be prepared to have, make a comment to move this forward now in August. That's it.
And so this course would place the public safety monitor function within the Office of Operational Analysis under Otter Hasmer.
Give it a helm.
All right, and we'll leave this off consent. Any other comment on this?
I have a question, since we have our moderator here now. If this position is added to your office, I mean, is that going to require the creation of an additional position in the budget, or would you be able to handle this with the existing positions that you have allocated within the budget?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I think that was a topic that the GOC did consider at their June meeting, and unfortunately, I wasn't present for that meeting, but I did submit a written opinion on that, that I think there's two issues at play. I think one is, the one before you tonight, is to place the PSCAB function in alignment with the Operational Analysis Office. And then there was the second topic of the creation of the monitor, and I think in the GOC recommendation, I will be serving as that monitor for the time being, based on their recommendation. And I expect to essentially monitor, you know, the functions that we're involved with with our office, the time we spend with PSCAB, and some of the assignments and tasks that were given, and report back to you as a commission, perhaps later this year, if in fact I feel an additional person is needed or additional budget recommendation. But at this time, I think the GOC's recommendation is just to place the responsibility with the office and to not take any further action with regards to staff and your budget.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to item 11, of course, we just had the work session presentation about the Eastside Library project, and Commissioner Cool will just give in your questions about potential cost considerations around the number of sites, we'll just leave this off consent, if that's all right with everybody. Any other questions about that? All right, 12, obviously same thing with regard to the space modernization, and we'll just leave that here on discussion.
Mayor, if I may, I just, if anybody wants to speak to it, I'd love to hear thoughts, but, you know, I'd be interested in narrowing the options on at least the Judicial Center. So if there are other colleagues who are interested in doing that as well.
Thinking about eliminating the North Avenue?
Yeah, I mean, if I had it my way, we'd have two, it would be those parking lots and the federal building. But, you know, anything that could reduce the amount of time and money that goes into reviewing additional sites. So if there are others interested in doing any kind of trimming of that list, I'd be happy to co-sponsor a commission-to-find option.
So for me, just based on working with the community, working with staff, and working with the user group, we had like hour and a half to two-hour-long meetings. Pretty much every meeting we went over, a lot of time. So I feel confident with the five that we have, but I'm open to, you know, suggestions of others who want to narrow it, but I think you're doing a disadvantage of the hard work that people put into it.
Mike?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'd certainly be interested in, I don't mind narrowing it down to those two. I think that's, you know, we own, I mean, besides the federal building, we own the other parcels. You know, one of the things I recognize too is that when you go through this process, you do spend a lot of time and effort and public input, and we want to just make sure that we're being direct and not raising expectations. So I think those two sites would help move the process along a little bit quicker for all of us. Or you're talking about all the three surface lots combined together, plus the federal building? Yep, works for me.
I would like to ask Commissioner Davenport then to communicate with us some more about, either, you know, after the meeting or right now, if you want to talk, but about how the committee as a whole, like, if we had them here, would they be going, "Yeah, we're good with those two," and go for it? Or was there strong feeling that the other sites were serious ones that should be considered? Because I know you guys have put a lot of time and thought into it, much more than I have.
Yeah, so some of the concerns with the three sites, Strong, North Jackson, that area, is future expansion. Because like, we have expanded the current courthouse, I think, three or four times. And there's some limitation when it goes, when you're building a courthouse vertically. And the judicial staff, who was on our committee, have some concerns about parking. For security reasons, you don't want to put a courthouse on top of a parking deck. And those three spots have some limitations. They're doable, but they have, in a phased approach, we wanted staff just to go look into and see how, you know, what parameters there are, what issues they have. The Lexington Road project, because the Lexington Road property, because we own the property, user group felt that it won't be, it won't cost us anything, but there are some issues when it comes to the environment and proximity to the airport. I felt that the Dory Street in a phased approach, the government building in a phased approach, would be feasible, and one of the user group person, member, excuse me, felt really strongly about parking, and the North Avenue provides a lot of parking, but it does require acquisition costs. So I still like the five, but if y'all want to do a CDL for two, that's fine.
In response to that, I think that it's very helpful to have some of those cost details that are laid out there. I know with the youth center with the West Broad site, in terms of lending credibility to the process and the financial side of it as well, having the details that come through the next stage, I think are helpful in that aspect. I'm not, you know, I just think that's worth considering as we make this decision, whether or not to trim the list further or not.
And my one last little pitch is, we're not going to build another courthouse in the next probably 100 years, so let's go through the five that, you know, the community picked and the user group picked and narrow it down. Yes, it's expensive and time-consuming, but at the same time, we want to do it right. Same thing with the Eastside Library.
John, do we have an estimated cost for the Judicial Center?
We've got a prospective square footage cost. Commissioner Williams?
Well, yes, and with the money that we have, we only feel like we can build about 70% of it, and that's the issue. And that's why we speak to phasing and things of that nature. So more likely than not, to realize the need, the space need is currently envisioned and reported by and studied, you know, there'll be the first addition built or building built, and then perhaps in the next SPOS, you'd come back and finish it. Or borrow money.
The SPOS, we have 76 million available. And so my question is, we're talking about bonds, we're talking about bonds. And so my question is, we're talking about bonds, we're talking about bonds earlier, I don't want to jeopardize bonds when we need this. And have, because I'm assuming we'll have to issue bonds to finish this project, correct?
Well, if we phase it and do cost estimating along the way, then perhaps, possibly no, we're not counting on bonds to go into the project currently. But the commission could decide to go further, of course. But we'll be bringing it to you. I think the, during the presentation, I think they, they deducted all the various cost.
Engineering costs, cost of renovation of the existing courthouse.
It's somewhere 45, 50 million is what's available now, I think, for that. If you're holding out some for some renovation of the, remember, it's a two-step project. Part of it was building a new Judicial Center, part of it was renovating the old courthouse.
Mike?
Sure, and I'll be brief. I just, I just kind of am getting concerned when I hear the word phasing, because I think that takes us away from, from where we want to be and what we, what we can really do to be transformative for, for how we're delivering services in our community and how our, how our court system is safe and operates in an efficient manner, that they always do. So, you know, the two sites that we're looking at, I see, you know, I could see some possibilities with the federal building, especially if we just, I mean, all we really need is their parking lot, when you think about it, as big as that parking lot is. But also with the three other sites, I mean, you could, I could certainly see, you know, a building connecting to other buildings on both sides and a parking deck on the other side. I mean, there's things that could work, and I just think we need to, we need to, you know, narrow it down, and those are two sites that are good to narrow down to. And then we start looking for partners that could help us, help us do some of this, that could help us do some of the bonding, and that help us can do some of the creative financing that could pay it, pay it back. And we've done it before, there's a model out there, so anyway, I'd be fine to help work on that.
All right, moving on to the corner of Oglethorpe and Hawthorne. We of course have taken a multi-year approach to intersection safety, and you see in the agenda report that there were a number of intersections that were identified for safety upgrades, but this was the one where there was the greatest opportunity to save people's health and potentially lives. And so we've now got the plan in front of you using some of the last of our SPOSS $21.
Consent.
Everybody okay with consent?
Who's district?
All right.
Do you consent, Commissioner Fisher?
All right, moving item 13 to consent. Item 14 is replacing the Sandy Creek Park playground equipment.
Consent.
We can't move this or the next one to consent because they have to be determined.
Yeah, we've got bids yet out. Any comments on this one? We like playgrounds.
I'm excited to see the new playground. Me and my family was just out there. My children enjoy the one that's already there, but you know, upgrades are upgrades. So I'm excited to see what they're going to do to return.
I understand the vision is something more on the scale of what you've got in the world of wonders.
Yeah.
Be exciting.
Yeah, on that, just on costs, a quick comment, in case it does get onto consent, I'm not sure how that would happen, but, but I am excited about it as too. I think that, you know, as a person who goes to playgrounds now with my grandchildren, I think having that like sort of a flashier, more exciting thing out there at Sandy Creek is going to pull people out there, and then they'll see the other resources, and everyone will just make Sandy Creek their go-to place for hiking and boating and everything else.
Every freshman class across the street that I speak with, I extol the virtues of Sandy Creek Park. It's a great, great date spot on the weekends, you take your date canoeing out there for cheap, lots of good hiking, play some disc golf, lots of opportunities out there. All right, again, as noted, item 15, can't go on consent, given that we don't have bids back, but this is for photovoltaic arrays at the ACC Library on Baxter Street. Questions about this one?
No, but I did want to point out that this, maybe it's the whole project, the $1 million project, I was looking at the, the monies, all the monies in this project 23, and, and wanted to note publicly that we were able to, I think, pull an additional $350,000 on top of the $1 million because of different rebate programs. And it's on this item that I had all the questions, but I brought them up earlier, the points about like the, getting some sort of report overall and how we're making decisions on rate of return, which is the best way to, you know, I'd like to learn a little bit more about what process we're using for choosing where to spend that money.
Do we prioritize those projects, knowing that there are so many? Any other questions about this one?
No.
Good. Manager Williams?
Well, I meant to say this earlier, but going back to the Sandy Creek Park playground, I think it's important to note that this will be our first fully inclusive playground in Athens Clark County. And that followed some of the conversations that came out of the Sandy Creek Nature Center Playscape, if you'll remember, there were some concerns that, that it was not fully inclusive, and, and of course, we went through all of that, and it wasn't necessarily meant to be as a playscape, but this playground will be, and, and staff paid attention to that along with the user group.
Great, thanks for that note, Manager Williams, I really appreciate it. All right, next item is perimeter fencing at the airport. It's a SPOSS, excuse me, T-SPOSS 2018 project.
Consent.
Consent.
Everybody okay with consent?
I'm just getting my nerves.
All right. All right, item 17 is kind of moving forward with sort of the next tranche of funding for public safety vehicles from our SPOSS program, and of course, you can see the kind of future financing needs in the agenda report. Questions about this? Jesse?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to keep this off consent, you know, I feel torn about this every time it comes up. You know, I don't know, maybe we can get some guidance from staff on what, if any, change in policy would be needed. My understanding is we've moved to these SUVs because they're the only, we've run this rabbit for a couple of years now, they're the only pursuit-rated hybrid vehicles on the market. So if that remains the case, that to me begs the question, are we more committed to pedestrian safety essentially, and other, you know, crash safety, or the 100% resolution? It's a tough position to be in, I guess. I don't want to have our staff unable to drive vehicles that work, unable to have functional air conditioning, you know, in the heat of the summer, right? So this is not me trying to keep us from placing the feet, the fleet, but I am concerned about us just doubling the physical size of all of our vehicles, understanding that they're putting on tons of miles and often moving at high speeds, and knowing the data around how likely a person is to die in a crash if they're hit by an SUV versus a car. And it's considerably more likely. And, you know, given that, if I had to choose personally, I would choose a regular-sized car, even if it used just regular gas, over a hybrid in those circumstances, although I do wish somehow the market would give us cars that were hybrid and pursuit-rated. So if that would require some kind of change of policy, I'd welcome guidance from staff on where that would need to happen, to say like, well, we're going to get pursuit-rated hybrids, but if they're not available, then we'll do blank. And I'd be interested in maybe changing that policy, because I, I'm just very uncomfortable with, you know, we have record number of fatalities on our roads already, and continuing to make, you know, hundreds of our vehicles double in size just doesn't sit well with me, even though I recognize the need for us to replace vehicles, so.
Carol and Patrick?
I'm not jumping on this, this boat train with, with my colleague there. I think there's a lot of other factors to look at here, even if you were going to make that decision, what, how large the other vehicles would be, what kind of safety reports do we have from our police officers? You know, these are heavy, the thing with these cars is they're heavy-duty drivetrain suspension electrical systems, but what are, what are the alternatives? And I hesitate to compromise so soon on our clean energy policy and have it as a precedent to make adjustments down the road because someone else thinks something else is more important than this. So I, our commitment to the 100% resolution here, to me, is very significant, and I'd have to be shown incredible data and specifics to be persuaded otherwise.
Patrick?
Yes, I like the, the electric part, but as Dr. Meyer said, but item number 12, is that item number 12? Yes, vaccine issues, number 12. So, because the Mach-Es are not the same, so I was looking confused, because it says that Ford submitted the Mach-E electric crossover vehicle in pursuit qualification process, but to this day Ford has not released a pursuit-rated Mach-E. So is that the intention to get the Mach-Es? Because the Mach-Es, electric cars are not as big as SUV, a little bit smaller.
That's right, but if they, if they were to give that, that pursuit rating, then that would open the door, you know, for perhaps a smaller vehicle for that purpose. We are, as the agenda notes, and this is more for the public, because I know you read it, you know, we are going to get one for corrections, they're going to start using them in the fleet and getting a feel for them. I'm told that Chevy might be having a hybrid come out in '25, but I think that's also an SUV, so.
Dexter?
And I think, one thing we need to consider, as law enforcement is changing, that's why they're requesting these type of vehicles, so we need to be able to support them and how we deal with our community and the way that law enforcement is going right now with vehicles. Unfortunately, in other towns I visit, that's all I'm seeing now, SUVs and these pursuits. But some of it is based on trying to get in areas that may be difficult to get in, so to get an SUV, you can get into those areas. So I think we need to be cautious when we're talking about maybe trying to get smaller vehicles for fall, and, you know, trying, also deal with the weapons that our police officers may encounter from time to time, so I will be cautious from my perspective and maybe deal with smaller vehicles. You know, but we can take a look at that.
And I, I wouldn't, I don't really have any skin in the game as far as what type of vehicles that they use. I would just like to see them more present in my district. That's it.
Okay. And I think, on a different sort of subject of this, I think it is significant to note that in the agenda report that really our problem is that there aren't cars available. These cars, the supply chain is, is so diminished here that we, it says ACC may face a state of emergency on fleet avail, vehicle availability, and talking about purchasing vehicles off lot, using competitive bids. So I just thought that was interesting to note as we're talking about this. I do want to say that I really love that chart, the fleet replacement life cycle chart, and I believe there was another chart that I did not copy in one of the other, later reports that had to do something else, but in terms of life cycle. And I would love it if we had a good wholesome discussion of life cycle replacement sometime this fall with all of these together, so that we could see how we can look, address them when it comes to budget time next year.
Note that for the, note that for the next retreat. I think we might, might be a little consumed already for the August one, but we'll, we'll be back in November-ish. All right, everybody ready?
Yep.
All right, item 18 is a kind of comparable set of capital projects for the facility equipment system replacement project. This is SPOSS item 27 in the SPOSS 2020 referendum.
Looks, looks good.
Questions about this one?
Uh-uh.
All right, with consent?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, item 19, we're going back to the table with Bishop Park improvements, and hopefully using state contract to get something within budget.
Looks good.
Questions about this?
It's got the to be determined again, so we can't.
Yeah, got to keep this on discussion. All right, 20 courses pertinent to the Boys and Girls Club contract, we talked about quite a bit earlier. 21, of course, was part of our work session, Classic Center Arena, their bond financing. 22, referenced earlier, with forthcoming MOU with the school district to work on youth development violence prevention in conjunction with them. And then 23 is the annual transportation funding agreement between the University of Georgia and Unified Government. All right, yeah.
With respect to the school district, and with particular attention being paid in some of the comments were made earlier, we, we've proposed a process to the superintendent, and he's talking with their board about it, but one of the first things that we suggested is that this board meet jointly with the Clark County School District Board and create the problem statement that you want this process to follow. So all the things that you brought up, and we want to hear it from the school district too, and that there would be a steering committee that you would say, here's a problem we want solved, here's your charge, and go forth. And that will be the start of this. So it starts with y'all, and what you want to see is this elected representatives of this community, and then that steering committee and staff would follow that through, and then at the very end of the process, would come back to a joint meeting of the boards to report and share, and then the boards could then take it and say, okay, here's what we're going to do going forward. So at a very high level, we have a lot of hope in that process, and would love that you color that process well.
Thanks, Manager Williams. All right, we have Planning Director Brad Griffin here. I'm going to go ahead and relocate, we're going to lower the screen, and we'll do the six planning and zoning items.
Do we blame?
When is the next time we meet with the school board?
Brad, refresh.
You can dab it out. Take a picture right here.
All right, and Order of Business is Planning Director Brad Griffin will give her report on each of these items. We'll have public input immediately following that, and then commission discussion, and with the site-specific items, beginning with that commissioner who represents the district. So Brad, good to see you back. Hope you're enjoying the summer.
Were you cutting your grass Saturday?
I was.
Yep.
Yes, I was.
Technology's working for us.
Okay, first item, and as the mayor said, we've got six of these for you this evening. First item is 125 Baxter Drive, this is a straight rezoning request from RM2 with a little bit of commercial general, a little bit of RS15 to RM3. It's also a land use map amendment for mixed density residential to Main Street business. What their, their initial ask at this point is to replace a single building consisting of, I think it's about 25 units and 40 bedrooms, that this building burned about 12 years ago. They were over RM2 density at the time that it burned. Our ordinance allows for that type of, of a disaster through fire, something like that, even if you're legal nonconforming, you can pull a permit within, I think it's a year, and build back what you lost. This did not happen, so they lost their ability to replace that building. They've indicated an interest in reserving down the road 10% to 15% of the new units for affordable housing. And as I mentioned before, the purpose initially is the replacement of the one building, and I'll show you where that building is in just a minute. This is the site on Baxter Drive, just south of Baxter Street. Just orientation, that's the library initially to the left, right there. So it kind of gives you a feel, this is a big, large piece property that sits back behind all of the inline retail there on Baxter Street. This would be the land use map change from mixed density residential to Main Street business, which would be compatible with those properties that front Baxter Street. And then this is the zoning change. And the two, the two little stubs you see there, if I can get there, right there, that piece is part of this property, is on CG, and this all gets into one of the conditions that we've asked to consider, that is the RS, single-family RS15 portion of the property to where they stub connection to Fortune Drive. to Fortune Drive, which will also come into play with condition. So here's kind of an as-bill survey of what is there currently. The building that burned is the one up, try to be light, right there, and that is the building that they're initially asking to replace, which would consist of the 40 bedrooms. But it is a straight rezoning, so with that, while it would increase their density and allow them to replace that building, it would also allow them to redevelop the site as currently requested. So the recommendation from the planning commission, it felt like it was consistent with the comprehensive plan, it would add residents to support Baxter businesses. There is a sewer issue right now until the Brooklyn Interceptor is completed. Our Public Utilities Department was willing to commit to the replacement of the 40-bedroom building with current sewer, but wanted that restricted for any further development until the interceptor project has been completed and we're able to reevaluate capacity in the system. And then just as a note, that they've talked about the inclusionary density bonus, RM3 right now would allow 50 beds an acre where RM2 allows 24. With the inclusionary density bonus that they could take advantage of with the rezoning of this property and with the appropriate affordable percentages, they could go up to as many as 75 beds an acre as an administrative approval for redevelopment. So the planning commission is recommending approval of future land use amendment, approval with conditions of the zoning, and the conditions are as follows, that the applicants shall be allowed to build the proposed 40-unit building as a replacement for the one that burned in '12. Additional development is not permitted without a sewer and water capacity evaluation and approval. No vehicular access off Fortune Drive, and that any approved rezon will only apply to the areas currently zoned RM2. So the little stubs that I showed you that were CG in RS15 that touched Baxter and Fortune would remain zoned CG in RS15. Probably more important for the Fortune Drive stub than it is for the Baxter Street, but it's important in Baxter in that if we rezon that RM3, the little stub, it impacts down the road the two commercial properties on either side of it if they ever redevelop in terms of buffering and things like that, because we've now included residential zoning. So those are the conditions, and the recommendation from Planning Commission was to approve.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm here, I'm here. I tell you, I told you all my mom and dad have moved to town, and I say, I tell them, I call them before I'm on my way to the meeting, I say, I'm going to be in a meeting tonight, so don't, you know, I may not be able to answer the phone, but who keeps calling? So, at any rate, I don't know about that, but so Brad, I appreciate your presentation, and I was at the planning commission, of course, there's a lot of residents around here interested in this and concerned as well. This is 18 acres for a straight rezon, and really what they're looking to do is to build back the one that burned down there. So Brad, let me ask you this, I mean, if there were a CDO that allowed for them to build back what was burnt down, basically we're, instead of the one-year extension, we're giving them a 10-year extension to build back, because these folks have owned the property for roughly around 10 years, so they can build exactly back what was there and rezon it, but rezon it with a condition that any future development of this property has to come back to the mayor and commission for approval with a binding site plan of architecture and elevations and such as that. Is that doable? And I'm asking that not knowing if the residents around there would support that or not, but I just want to, I just want to put that on the table to see if that's, because I think the concerns I've heard is that, you know, this isn't, you know, this, this does open the door. If you, if we do a straight rezon, it does open the door to, once that water and sewer capacity is there, and it's going to be there once that Brooklyn intercept is finished, it does open the door for somebody to come in and buy it and tear it all down and build something back up without, you know, the residents, long-time residents behind there having a say or just being aware or something of that. So you see what, you see what I'm trying to do here?
I do, and I mean, that's not inconsistent with some of the projects that we have done in the past, where we had out parcels in larger commercial developments that were yet to be designed and that they were required to come back. I think you could do that. It would, we'd have to word the condition carefully on the replacement building. I think it's important from a developer standpoint, and Mayor, before I forget, they may be here. I don't, we didn't allow for public comment on these, so.
Oh, apologies.
Yep, but, you know, what you're, the message you would be sending with that CDO as a commission is that we don't have a problem with the density going to 50 beds, but we want to ensure that the design is appropriate and compatible with neighborhood.
Well, and I need to make sure that the neighborhood is okay with that, I'm just trying to.
But I mean, yeah, where you would, where you just, but I think that's an important point, because, you know, you've given them the RM3, you want an opportunity to review the design, but I think we would be in a difficult situation if, when they came back with an overall design of the project, part of a reason for not approving it was the density. You've given them the density through the RM3 with condition that you want an opportunity to review the design and the community an opportunity to see it before it's finalized.
Okay, and that's something to think about, I do think, for the neighbors and for me in representing them, so, and I do think, though, however, a design would show us a lot, I mean, certainly there's stormwater concerns, so even though that density would be allowed, I don't know that you would be able to maximize all of that.
Well, and I can tell you, RM3, right now, with its current bedroom allowance and our parking requirements, is a really difficult, it's in a difficult area of development, because you're starting to bump up on needing to do structured parking at 50 beds an acre. It's hard to do that all in surface parking.
Right.
Unless you've got a really, really big piece of property, and then it affords you still more units.
So there's roughly about 400? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's a, I mean, full build out at 50 beds on this property is about 452-bedroom apartments, which means you got to build either 900 space parking deck, which is probably $25 to $30 million, which is not going to pencil out, I wouldn't think, in a project of straight multifamily, or you've got to build about seven and a half acres of surface parking on 18 acres, that's almost half your land, you've got lot coverage requirements, I mean, it's just, it's a, I think that's why we haven't seen a lot of RM3 so far, so.
So RM3 would allow 452 bedrooms or 452 apartments?
450 two-bedroom apartments, 900 bedrooms.
Okay.
And 900 parking space.
And that's, that's, that's quite a bit of bedrooms.
You know, it's about a fourth of the density of the projects we're seeing in downtown, but it is certainly, it's a different product than we're seeing in our RM1 and RM2 designs, so.
Right, and I think, I think y'all see what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to, trying to make sure that the neighbors around there and that they can build the building back as the way it was, and maybe we ought to, maybe we ought to have discussion at some point about that one year, if something burns down, maybe not enough adequate time for somebody, but that's another discussion for another day. So, at any rate, I'm going to work with Brad and the residents around there to come up, maybe with a CDO, and go from there, but I do think there may be somebody here to speak or not.
Just, and I'm going to call for public input in just a second, but I do think a little bit about the project that we approved on the corner of Millage and West Broad, and one of the aspects that we included were some setbacks and some planted buffering, and so just as you're thinking about all the tools in the box, there's maybe ones to consider.
Right, yeah, that's a good example there.
Same density.
Yeah, and yes, that same density, RM3.
Okay, good example.
Any public input on this item? Even just give us your name?
Is this a formal three minutes, or is this more?
Yeah, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Nick Hilaris, and I represent the ownership. My partners have owned this property for 10 years, and we plan to own it for the long term, and we just wanted to come here tonight to introduce ourselves to all of you and thank you in advance for your consideration of this zone change request, and just give you a little flavor for our intentions. We've owned this site for 10 years, and we intend to own it for a very long time. We have no plans on going for a zone change and flipping it, nor do we have plans on tearing down a bunch of the buildings. The property is currently financed with a Freddie Mac loan that expires in 2030, so we couldn't really do anything in the near term anyways. We do have the approval of Freddie Mac to do this 40-unit project, which we're excited about doing, and we view this site as a, kind of a key piece in the city as a naturally occurring affordable housing, and we want to keep it that way. And any new developments that we do, we're committed to including the inclusionary zoning units as affordable. So I don't know if my architect has anything else he'd like to add, but just wanted to share that with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Chris Huntley with Terminus Design Group. I've been hired by Nick and his partners to go through this rezoning process, just have a few points to make, most of which are reflected in the staff report and the planning commission's discussion last month. So basically what we're requesting is a rezon from RM2 to RM3, everybody knows that. It's already a high-density multifamily property, has been since the 70s, right? A lot of people have lived in Athens as their first apartment in University Gardens. That was noted in the planning commission, several of those members had actually lived there. As Mr. Hilaris said, this is a naturally occurring affordable option for housing in Athens because it is located on transit, public transit lines, it is close to grocery stores, it is close to hospitals, libraries, schools, a lot of things that are very attractive for people that cannot afford cars and cannot afford oil changes and tires and everything that comes along with that. So this, this is a unique property, it's uniquely positioned to accommodate, I think, responsible growth in Athens, Clark County, over the, over the next generations, as Mr. Hilaris said, over the next 30 or 40 years, this property is aging, it needs to be redeveloped, it needs to be renovated. I think the RM3 zoning designation would allow that to happen in a sustainable and responsible way. And to have, from my perspective as an architect, to have a developer come through, property owner come through and commit right up front to providing affordable housing as deed restricted is pretty rare, and to have that now, I think, is a really incredible opportunity for not just this commission, not just this mayor, but for Athens, Clark County at large, to be able to have that in writing and agree to now that says any future development on this property is going to be 10% to 15% affordable. So with that, I'll let you discuss, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask us.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Yeah, just for clarification, what would be the average rent in the area, in that particular unit, the units there?
The average rents in the existing buildings?
And what you're going to bill for, what you're going to calculate as the average rent?
The property is a very unique property in a sense, because it was built in random phases over time, and so there's all kinds of different unit types, there's everything out there right now from really tiny studios to four-bedroom townhomes, and the rent ranges from like $600 for the studios to, I think some of the townhomes get over $2,000. The new units, I haven't, we haven't really studied doing it, just because we knew we had this hurdle, so I haven't, I don't have a good answer for you right now, but I don't imagine it, you know, given where this building would sit on this property, I have a hard time believing that it would command sort of what you would consider to be normal market rents, just because it's, it would be a new building kind of plopped in the middle of an old building with old amenities, so I do think it's going to command a lower market, lower than market rent.
I was just wondering about the AMI, that's why I was trying to figure what would be your average and what would be the AMI for the affordable, what would be the affordability of that, so.
If you don't mind, here, I'll just follow up with Commissioner Fisher, and these are some I will address in the, in the commission-defined options, so that we're, you know, so that we're certain, and the neighbors, if they, if they agree to it, are certain, are certain about what to expect as well, so, so at any rate, I think, I think we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, more TBA. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, Brad?
Next item is 2460 West Broad Street. This is a zoning request, is a, technically it's a request to remove conditions from an existing rezoning that occurred in 2008. Those conditions that were placed on the rezoning at the time were that the property needed to be subdivided from the balance of the family property, that access was restricted only from Beach Haven Drive, and that a 50-foot buffer along the western property line should be installed. At the time that this came through in '08, the full depth of the CG property that we're looking at tonight, it was only about half of that, and the owner of the property, in an attempt to make it marketable, wanted to extend effectively about double the depth of the, of the commercial zoning, and then subdivide it and market it, and so that was the reason that the conditions were added. Owners, as I recall, agreed to these conditions, but now they are coming back, they've got a, they've got a potential developer that wants to develop this property, and I think really the big condition that they're looking to have removed is restricting the access only from Beach Haven Drive. So you see the property here, this is along West Broad Street, this is the frontage of our Beach Haven property, is going out of town before you cross the river, just past the shopping center. Currently zoned CG, as you see there, with conditions, and they're asking to have those conditions removed. This is a concept plan only, the developer that has approached the property owner has indicated that their desire would be to build a hotel on the property, but with a straight rezoning, they are not, they're not bound to that at this point. It could be a hotel, it could be any other permitted use within the commercial zoning district. But you see here that there is currently a median cut just below the, where they're showing the driveway coming in off of Broad Street to the hotel that is in West Broad Street in that location, placed by the state. This is the existing Beach Haven Drive that the current condition says that this is the only access to all of that commercial property is here. What that would mean, and this is also the access to all the residents that live back behind it, and access to our, to the Beach Haven property that we currently hold as well. The biggest issue from my standpoint, that I think staff saw and planning commission saw, is that, I mean, it's possible that this could be done, but in order to do it, a couple of things have to happen. First of all, that residential character driveway would have to be widened to a full commercial driveway, like any other driveway that you would see. It can also only go as deep in, if you see on this map, that red stops only about halfway back, that's where the little notch cutout is, that's where the current driveway is. And so you would have, you would have to get into the subject property before you got beyond the red, which then gets you into creek and environmental areas, and it becomes extremely difficult. So we think it's reasonable, especially given that we have a curb cut on Broad Street that was placed there by GDOT to consider the removal of that condition. I think the planning commission felt the same way. There's the median cut that's currently in place, which would be the location of the driveway. Recommendation from Planning Commission is to approve with conditions, they feel like it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. With regard to the conditions that were currently in place, condition one was completed at the time of zoning approval, the property was subdivided, so it's really a non-issue. Conditions two and three are in effect, as we talked about. Staff suggest a new buffer condition, and it's really just clarifying the language, instead of just saying it's a 50-foot buffer, it's a 50-foot buffer in compliance with 915-3A1, which specifies the type of buffer and what has to be done if it's not full enough. The planning, the staff recommendation to the planning commission was for a right-in, right-out only into the site from West Broad Street. The planning commission made a modification to that, and they recommend that the site be granted full ingress, which means that if you're coming into town on Broad Street, you can get into that median cut and turn left to go into what is being shown as the hotel. Certainly, if you're coming out of town, you can go right into the site, but if, when you leave the site, you can not try to make a left turn through that median cut across to go into town. It would be restricted only to a right turn only exit, and you would have to go up and turn around at some point. The developer has run that recommendation by our GDOT district friends, and they've looked at it, and they are in agreement with the, with the design of the looked at it and they are in agreement with the, with the design of the access as recommended by the planning commission and had no problems with it. So the recommendation is to approve with the conditions that you see noted here, and it was a unanimous vote.
Thanks, Brad. Any public input on this item? All right. This is in Commissioner Link's district. He's not with us tonight. Any other input on this from members of the body?
I have some. I'm a big fan of Town Place Suites. That's a pristine area that has been undeveloped for a decade, well, never been developed. I just have some concerns about the residents in the back. And just, even though it's a three-lane, yeah, it's a three-lane? Yeah. Folks are going to make a left turn out of that, out of just, ideally, you know, wanting to see that happen. I know it happens on Cooper Road a lot, where you deny that access. And the buffer, but I have to, I might have to pray on this one. That's it.
All right. Move on to the next one?
Yes, sir. Next item is a special use request at 115 Joe Carey Road. It's an AR zone. Purpose is a personal care home with four to six clients. It's an existing five-bedroom, three-bath house. Existing parking is there and no proposed changes to the site or building. It's really just conversion of a single-family house to what we would call a group personal care home, given the size. You see the location here on Joe Carey Road. Some AR. This is the home that would be converted. And as I mentioned, no exterior changes, no physical changes to the property other than those that may be impacted by a condition added, and I'll explain that in a minute. This is the site plan that would, becomes the binding plan. Recommendation from the planning commission is to approve with conditions. And those conditions, there were two of them. The septic system should be improved, and this is a comment we received from the health department to support the number of clients. They, they may have to do it and go and up, do an upgrade to their drain field and make, make it a little longer. And then the applicant shall meet 2018 NFPA 101, Chapter 32. This is fire marshal code information. This is conversion of the house, handicap accessibility, kitchen. There may be a revisions to the vent hood system for the kitchen for this type of a use. Reason this commer, this condition was added by our fire department was just to make sure that the applicant was aware that with this type of change of use, there, there may be some additional improvements required to be compliant that oftentimes this type of a conversion, the individual's doing it, don't think they have to change anything. So it was really just to make sure there was an understanding. The fire marshal was at the planning commission meeting and helped to explain it to the applicant. And so the recommendation is to approve with these two conditions.
Thanks, Brad. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? All right. It's in District 3.
Yeah, I'm excited to see this go forward. Quick question. They could possibly expand and it'll be okay? Or is it just like they're going to stay what we've seen on the screen and that's just going to be?
With a special use permit, they're going to stay just like you see it on the screen with the number of people they told you. If they want to expand, they would amend the special use and bring in the proposed expansion and you would vote on that.
All right. I see no quarrels.
I just got a question for Judd. So these are family members of mine, close. They have not contributed financially to my campaign, but any kind of contributions, should I abstain?
I think I would recommend that I'll take a closer look, and it sounds like that'd be the appropriate thing to do. Recuse yourself.
Recuse.
Recuse, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for asking, Pat. Any other input on this? All right. Moving on to the next one?
Okay. The last of our zoning items, and then we've got a couple to deal with street names. 380 Danielsville Road is a special use permit request. This is for a veterinary clinic. It is an acre and a half of a six-acre site, 3,000 square foot building, 17 parking spaces. This is located in the Norwood neighborhood, a commercial note, and the purpose, as mentioned, is to allow a vet clinic in this commercial neighborhood zone. Little history on this property, and you see it here. This property was rezoned from AR to what was then local business in 1987. As an extension of the Norwood district, the property owner had a market-type convenience store in the Norwood area but was getting ready to move out of it and wanted to rebuild across the street. And so what his proposal was, was to rezone it to local business, do a retail business in the front. And then the entire depth of that property from the, from behind the commercial retail center was all mini warehouses. Mini warehouses in local business zoning was a conditional use in the 80s, and so it had to go through, at that point it would have been county commission approval. County commission approved it. It gets a condition attached to it and a binding plan, and to this day, this property is still zoned for the allowance of that entire property to be filled with mini warehouses by right, based on that old conditional use approval. What the applicant here is asking to do is really to eliminate that old conditional use for mini warehouses. They want to do a vet clinic in the front, and I'll show you that in just a minute, right here. And then set aside the reserve, the rear of the property for future development that would be compliant with the current commercial neighborhood zoning classification. So really, the, the building that's proposed is in the same place as the old original 87 approval. It's a little smaller than that one was, but it, it is a vet clinic that would not have any outdoor kennels, any overnight boarding outdoors that you, you worry about with the vet clinics in proximity to residences because of noise. This would not have that. There were some conditions that the planning commission recommended as part of their approval. There were, there were three of them here. The existing condition of a binding plan for the mini warehouses, self-storage is removed. Just, I think everybody wanted to make that clear that through the adoption of this special use, we're removing the, the old approval of the mini warehouse use on the property. We requested that the applicant amend their plan to show a parcel division with a minimum 50-foot wide strip to the rear of the lot for access and utilities. And then they should amend their plan to address comments relating to driveway separation. There were a couple more dealing with some tree canopies. Those have been addressed. Let me explain a little bit of what we're talking about here. The way it's subdivided here, and this was the original submittal to the planning commission, they're taking the whole acre and a half off the front and separating it from the back with full frontage to this property. By doing that, the remaining four and a half acres in the back are now cut off from water and sewer, which is a big thing. So the recommendation was if they just, they had plenty of lot width, if they just take that northern 50 feet of the frontage and do a flag lot back to the remaining four, that gives the four acres in the back direct access to water, not sewer, because sewer's not out there, but certainly water, and access. And then the, the subdivision would just include an access easement to get to the parking lot of the vet clinic. It makes it easier for future development and we're not dealing with either having to do a main line extension, water extension to the back. So that was the reason for that condition and they've agreed to do that. But with that, the planning commission recommendation was to approve with those conditions.
Thanks, Brad. Any public input on this item?
So my name is Danielle Berry. I work for Blue Frill Construction. We're the design builder that is involved with the project that will be developing the property. So just really here to answer any questions you guys might have. We're pretty excited to bring it to the community. Vet clinics tend to do very well, especially near residential areas. People like to have them in their community. It makes it very convenient and it's just a really good business, great opportunity for employment for surrounding residents as well.
Thanks, Ms. Berry. I appreciate it. If there are any questions, we'll definitely call you. See, this is in Commissioner Thornton's district. She had to leave. She expressed support for this. Any other questions from the body? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We've got a couple of street name-related items.
Got two more for you. The first one, and these need to go in this order and I'll explain why. The first one is a text amendment to Section 91527, which is our street naming language that was recently put into the ordinance. The proposed amendment goes at the end of that Section A. The language in, the last statement in the current section reads that streets that are an extension of or are in alignment with existing streets shall have the same name as existing streets, meaning that if, you can't go in and change the name of a block of a street and then it changes right back by ordinance. What we're asking for consideration is to amend it by adding at the end of that sentence, unless the renaming does not impact any existing street addresses. So if you've got a section of street at the very end, there are no properties addressed off of it, you could change a single block of a street at the end. So that is a text amendment that we're asking for your consideration of. And, and it goes in line with the next item, which came to us from you all through an agenda report, which is the renaming of the last block of South Finley Street to Lenin Town Lane. And you see the section of it here, that, that section of South Finley does not have any current addresses on it. Both of the dormitories on the UGA campus are addressed with Baxter Street addresses. And so the second portion of this is the request to go through the street name change. We have followed procedure, gone through and sent out notices. Planning commission recommendation for both the amendment and the street name change will be to approve with unanimous votes.
Any public input on this item?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
With the code, the change to code, any changes would still have to come through the mayor and commission, or could staff theoretically just approve a change? Okay. It would still require a whole process, even if it was another similar situation with no affected addresses?
You all went through and, and formalized the amendment process that had, or the street name change process that hadn't been updated since the 90s, earlier this year or late last year, and set forth from some pretty specific requirements for somebody to want to rename a street. There's always that exemption or exception if it's something that comes to us from you all as a group that we would process it. But any street name change still has to go through the formal approval process of the commission.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Just a kind of interesting note, and I was thinking about this as this was getting lined up. You know, what some communities will do is have sort of a ceremonial secondary name for a street or a block. I think about New York City and Washington DC have a couple of those where, you know, it's 126th Street, but then there's sort of this secondary ceremonial name. That may be something we may want to consider at some future day. So I just want to put that out there. All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a great night.